I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. I'm David Reese, Chair of the Board. This is the second of four public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, lots, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. I will now take roll call, please respond at present. Christina DeRose. Robert Erlich.
Present.
Shayla Garcia.
Present.
Christian Gonzalez Rivera. Arpit Gupta. Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Christina Smith.
Present.
Adan Soltran.
Present.
David Reese, present. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a virtual public hearing this Wednesday, June 8th. This will be our last virtual public hearing to comment on the proposed guidelines. However, we will also be conducting in-person public hearings on June 13th and June 15th. The details for attending these hearings can be found in the meeting schedule on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or by calling 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. You can also pre-register to speak at the in-person hearings on our website, or by calling 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Pre-registration for the June 13th hearing will end at 12:00 p.m. on June 10th, and for the June 15th meeting at 12:00 p.m. on June 14th. Each of these hearings will also be streamed live on our YouTube channel. To find out how to watch, visit the RGV website, nyc.gov/rgb, or call the RGV at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. We will also be taking comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. This testimony must be submitted no later than Thursday, June 16th. You can find information on submitting testimony on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or you can leave audio testimony by calling 929-256-5472. That's 929-256-5472. The final vote will take place on Tuesday, June 21st, starting at 7:30 p.m. at the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 7 East 7th Street, at the corner of 3rd Avenue in Manhattan. The public may attend in person or may watch the vote live by streaming it on the RGV's YouTube channel. To find out how, visit the RGV website, nyc.gov/rgb, or call the RGV at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. I'd like to thank you all for attending this public hearing. The Board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Before we proceed with testimony, I would like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the Board. We will begin with speakers who registered in advance. We will alternate between tenants, owners, and public officials with a speaking limit of two minutes per person. If there is time at the end of the hearing, we will then hear from unregistered speakers on a first-come, first-served basis. We will explain how to do that after all registered speakers have spoken. When it is your turn to speak, a staff member will promote you from an attendee to a panelist, and you will have the ability to speak and to display your video if you so choose. Please wait for your name to be announced before you commence your testimony. If you are attending the Zoom hearing with a name or phone number that differs from the name or phone number you registered with, we will not be able to identify you, and you may lose your place in the queue. If you are not an attendee of the hearing at the time your name is called, you will also lose your place in the queue. A two-minute timer will begin and will be displayed periodically during your testimony. At the conclusion of your testimony, you will become an attendee again without speaking privileges as we move on to our next speaker. There are Spanish interpreters here today. To listen to testimony in Spanish, please use the interpretation button in Zoom to choose the appropriate channel. For English speakers, select the English channel to hear English speakers, as well as Spanish speakers interpreted into English. If you do not choose an interpretation channel, you will hear all testimony in the native language of the speaker. If you are using the Zoom app on a smartphone, you may find the interpretation button by pressing the "more" button. We expect many speakers today, and the Board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to join us and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. That being said, let me just add one last point. Please speak somewhat slowly so that the interpreters can keep up with you. That will help everyone understand your comments as much as possible. We thank you for your cooperation, and we look forward to testimony.
And now in Spanish. Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la junta de normas de alquiler de Nueva York. Soy David Reese, el director de la junta. Esta es la segunda de las cuatro audiencias públicas que tomarán en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lots, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres de 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos del 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1er de octubre del 2022 hasta el 30 de septiembre del 2023. Ahora pasaré lista, por favor responda si está presente. Christina DeRose. Robert Erlich, presente. Shayla Garcia, presente. Cristian Gonzalez Rivera. Arpit Gupta. Alex Schwartz, presente. Christina Smith, presente. Adan Soltran, presente. David Reese, presente. Que consten actas que exista un quorum. La próxima reunión de esta junta será una audiencia pública en persona el próximo lunes 13 de junio en el Jamaica Performing Arts Center en Queens desde las 5 de la tarde hasta las 9 de la noche. Esta será la primera de dos audiencias en persona para comentar sobre las pautas propuestas. Nuestra segunda audiencia pública en persona será el 15 de junio en el Main Theater del Hostess Center for the Arts and Culture en el Bronx desde las 4 de la tarde hasta las 9 de la noche. Tenga en cuenta que ambos lugares tienen protocolos del COVID-19 que deben seguirse para asistir a estas audiencias. Los detalles para asistir a estas audiencias, al igual que los protocolos del COVID-19, se pueden encontrar en el calendario de reuniones en nuestro sitio web, nyc.gov/rgb, o al llamar al 212-669-7480 entre las 9 de la mañana y las 5 de la tarde. También podrá inscribirse por adelantado para hablar en persona en estas audiencias en nuestro sitio web o al llamar al 212-669-7480 entre las 9 de la mañana y las 5 de la tarde. La preinscripción para la audiencia del 13 de junio finalizará a las 12 del mediodía del 10 de junio y para la reunión del 15 de junio a las 12 del mediodía del 14 de junio. Cada una de estas audiencias también se transmitirá en vivo en nuestro canal de YouTube. Si desea saber cómo sintonizarnos, visite el sitio web de la junta RGV, al nyc.gov/rgb, o llame a la junta RGV al 212-669-7480 entre las 9 de la mañana y las 5 de la tarde. También aceptaremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera del horario de nuestras audiencias públicas. Este testimonio debe presentarse a más tardar el jueves 16 de junio. Encontrará datos sobre cómo presentar su testimonio en nuestro sitio web, nyc.gov/rgb, o puede dejar un testimonio en forma de audio al llamar al 929-256-5472. La votación final tendrá lugar el martes 21 de junio a partir de las 7:30 de la noche en the Great Hall de Cooper Union ubicado en la 7 este de la calle 7, en la esquina de la 3ª avenida. El público podrá asistir en persona o ver la votación en vivo que será transmitida en el canal de YouTube de la junta. Para saber más al respecto, visite el sitio web de la junta RGV, al nyc.gov/rgb, o llame a la junta RGV al 212-669-7480 entre las 9 de la mañana y las 5 de la tarde. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus opiniones sobre los ajustes propuestos a las normas de alquiler. Antes de continuar con sus declaraciones, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para los que desean declarar ante la junta. Empezaremos con hablantes que se inscribieron por adelantado. Alternaremos entre inquilinos, propietarios, y funcionarios públicos, y cada persona dispondrá de dos minutos para declarar. Si hay tiempo al final de la audiencia, escucharemos a los hablantes no inscritos por orden de llegada. Explicaremos cómo hacerlo después de que todos los hablantes inscritos hayan hablado. Cuando sea su turno de hablar, un miembro del personal lo cambiará de participante a panelista, y así podrá hablar y mostrar su video si así lo desea. Espere a que se anuncie su nombre antes de empezar con su testimonio. Si aparece en la audiencia de Zoom con un nombre o número telefónico diferente al nombre o número con los que se inscribió, no podremos identificarle, y es posible que pierda su lugar en la fila. Si no es participante de la audiencia en el momento en que se llame su nombre, también perderá su lugar en la fila. Se usará un reloj para marcar los dos minutos y se mostrará de vez en cuando durante su declaración. Una vez concluido su testimonio, dejará de ser panelista y volverá a ser participante, sin privilegios de hablar. Después pasaremos a nuestro próximo hablante. Hoy contamos con intérpretes de español. Para escuchar el testimonio en español, use el botón de interpretación en Zoom para elegir el canal adecuado. Para los hablantes de inglés, elija el canal en inglés para escuchar tanto a los hablantes de inglés como a los hispanohablantes interpretados al inglés. Si no elige un canal de interpretación, escuchará todo el testimonio en el idioma nativo del hablante. Si está utilizando la aplicación Zoom en un teléfono inteligente, puede encontrar el botón de interpretación presionando el botón "more" o "más". Esperamos que haya muchos hablantes, y la junta desea escuchar a tantos de ellos como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que desea que escuchemos en tan solo dos minutos. Sin embargo, le pedimos que comprenda que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todos los que se hayan tomado el tiempo de acudir a esta audiencia hoy a declarar tengan la oportunidad de hacer oír sus voces. Y una última cosita, por favor, si es posible hablar un poquito más lento durante su momento de hablar, porque en sí ayudaría a los intérpretes. Entonces, le damos las gracias por su cooperación.
Thank you. We'll begin with testimony. We have Assemblymember Glick, welcome Assemblymember. We look forward to your testimony.
Thank you very much. Shall I begin?
Please.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today regarding these changes in rent stabilization lease renewals. I represent Tribeca, Soho, Greenwich Village, East Village, and I'm here today, however, on behalf of all rent-regulated tenants in New York. As the city emerges from the COVID crisis, we're experiencing a housing emergency. The city's Department of Housing Preservation and Development recently released their 2021 housing and vacancy survey, and those results found that the number of available apartments for low- and middle-income residents is at its lowest level since 1991, with less than 1% of apartments renting for $1,500 or less. I'm going to move really fast here because I see the time evaporating. The rents are soaring, recovery is uneven, wealthy New Yorkers are doing better, but poorer and middle-class members of our community are doing very poorly. Unemployment is at 7%, twice the national average, and twice that for black New Yorkers. This year, the Board has presented proposed 2% to 4% increase in one-year renewals and 4% to 6% for two-year renewals. These increases are the biggest jump since 2013, at a time when economic opportunities for financially vulnerable New Yorkers are extremely limited. Given the insecurity of so many New Yorkers, I urge you to take compassion, responsive, and moral action, and vote for a continued rent freeze or for the lowest possible increase that would satisfy the most pressing financial needs of our small owners, who have not gotten the assistance that large owners have in fact received. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Assemblymember. We have Senator Brisport as our next speaker. Welcome, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for giving me a chance to speak tonight. I'm using my two minutes wisely. It is a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of tenants and housing rights in New York City today. You know, a few months ago, when I saw a proposal for upwards of 9% for two-year leases, my eyes almost popped out of my head. That's an unacceptable amount of increase. And even the recent ones voted on, you know, 2% to 4% for one-year leases and 4% to 6% for two-year leases, just like the Assemblymember said right before me, those are the largest increases in nearly a decade since 2013. This is all while the cost of living is increasing for everyday New Yorkers on everyday items, while wages are not increasing in the way they should. And many renters are on fixed incomes, many renters are still on the job hunt. And if we do displace renters with rents that they cannot afford, based on the decisions that this Board makes, if renters cannot afford to stay in their homes and are displaced, there is nowhere for them to go. There is almost no truly affordable housing in this city, and there will be a domino effect of increasing the homelessness crisis. If people do not have stable housing, it will be harder for them to get jobs, which has a devastating effect not only for them, but also for New York City's economic recovery as a whole. So I encourage the Board to take all this into account as you're voting, to vote for the choice that keeps the most people in their homes, to either freeze the rents or roll them back. And thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Senator. Our next speaker is Assemblymember Rosenthal. Welcome, Assemblymember. Assemblymember, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. Where's the clock also?
It just went up, and you have your full two minutes, so whenever you're ready.
Okay, I don't actually see it, but I'll go fast. Thank you. I'm Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal. I represent the Upper West Side and parts of Hell's Kitchen and the 67th Assembly District. Tonight, it is actually appalling that I must stand before the Rent Guidelines Board to explain why a potential increase in rent of between 2% and 4% for one-year leases and 4% and 6% for two-year leases would be financially catastrophic to the millions of rent-regulated tenants who call the city home. Unlike members of the RGV, I don't need binder's worth of data to understand how the COVID-19 pandemic has affected the lives of New Yorkers. Since mid-March 2020, my office has been flooded with phone calls, emails from people seeking, pleading for any type of financial assistance, whether it be one-shot deals, ERAP, unemployment benefits, private grants. These are people who have everything to lose should the Board greenlight ill-advised rent increases. Even now, close to two and a half years since the onset of the pandemic, many city residents are still in dire financial straits. One of my constituents who works as a makeup artist lost most of her income during COVID, forcing her to search for odd jobs during one of the most tumultuous and unsafe periods in history. Her landlord filed an eviction case against her even though she did apply for ERAP. Given the shortage of tenant attorneys, she struggled to defend herself against a landlord and a judge who could not understand why she had difficulty paying down her arrears. The constituent story is not unique. On the West Side alone, more than 2,500 of my constituents are fighting for their homes in eviction court. The reality was not depicted in the RGV's most recent income and affordability study. Landlords would have far less trouble keeping pace with the cost. Okay, so I call for rent freeze if possible, and I understand the small landlords need assistance, and we need to do something to help them, but regular tenants are really strapped, and it would be catastrophic for many if these large increases were implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember. We have Assemblymember Gallagher as our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I apologize for my location, I'm on the move. But I am Assemblymember Emily Gallagher, and I represent the 50th AD, which is Greenpoint and Williamsburg in Brooklyn. 82% of my constituents are renters. 18,000 of them live in regulated apartments, 19,000 of them live in unregulated apartments, many of which were formerly regulated apartments that were de-controlled during vacancy de-control. So it is critical that we maintain these 18,000 rent-stabilized units, and 46% of my constituents pay more than 30% of their income for rent, and 25% pay more than half of their income in rent. For a long time, I was one of these tenants, and I know that my office deals primarily with two kinds of cases. We deal with landlord-tenant harassment cases, and we deal with unemployment cases. So I know that my constituents are very strapped, they are struggling to find work. If they are back in the workforce, they're trying to get back on their feet, and they absolutely will not be able to weather the storm that a 9% rent increase would create. Additionally, as one of my predecessors on this hearing said, there is not a great deal of equally affordable housing in the district. We are adding rent-stabilized units through 421A, but the reality is that those are coming in at a very high level in terms of AMI for our district. So many of those apartments are actually starting at the higher level of rents that are available in this district. Most of my renters are paying between $1,000 and $2,500 a month. So I ask for rent freeze as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember. Our next speaker is Leon Goldenberg.
Good evening. The job of, yes, the job of the RGV is to review the increased costs in operations of buildings, and that should be the sole function of the RGV. Whether tenants can or cannot afford an increase is really not the job of the RGV. That is the responsibility of the city and the state. When people can't afford to buy milk or eggs, the government gives out food stamps. They don't tell grocers to lower all their prices or to freeze their prices. I've recommended four years ad nauseam to many members of the legislature, both city and state, that the SCREE program, which was enacted for seniors, should be introduced on a much larger scale to low-income people. The city and the state should be picking up the increase in rents that the landlords are duly entitled to. Over the past eight years, landlords have received a total of 5.25% increase. That's it. My taxes alone have increased more than 5.25% of my rent rolls, not over prior year's taxes. My tax event increased from as little as 25% to above 50% over the last eight years. Next month, my taxes are going up 9.1% across all the buildings that we manage. My insurance has increased five, more than 5.25% again of my rent roll. Insurance has more than tripled in the last eight years, and not even talking about the increase in minimum wage, fuel, and water. Using basic math, how do you expect us to maintain our buildings? There are no increases outside of what you give us, there are no increases on vacancies. Landlords are sitting on 35,000 vacancies that require major capital improvements with minimal increase. The 10,000 allotted on the new IAI program is not sufficient due to renovations, nor does it make any financial sense. I'd be happy to show you some of those apartments and see if landlords are exaggerating as their condition and the cost of renovating some of these apartments. Years ago, RGV gave additional increase on extremely low rents. Yes, I have tenants who pay as low as $403. So even a 4.5% increase is only $18. In buildings we manage, we have 55 apartments who have rents below $700. Give us the increase based on our actual cost and have the city and state subsidize the tenants. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Just because of time, I think we'll move on. Our next speaker is Steve Mullen, and I would just like to remind everybody, myself included, to try to speak slowly so that the interpreters can keep up with us as they're translating us simultaneously. Mr. Mullen, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Steve Mullen, and I appreciate your time tonight. Tonight, I'll briefly touch on, number one, the personal impact of the proposed rent guidelines, and then, two, the pending economic storm facing our city. I'm a 75-year-old resident of Steit Town living on 20th and FDR. My wife, stepdaughter, and I typically share a typical one-bedroom apartment. Even with my social security income and all of us working, our rent is 49% of our combined income. We simply can't afford the proposed rent increase of $1,700 to $2,500 a year on a two-year lease. But moving after just one year is too expensive, and besides, a one-year lease only adds to the owner's expenses. My suggestion would be both renters and owners would greatly benefit from a multi-year lease with no increase in the outlands. Turning now to the economic storm, you probably have all noticed the many, many empty shops across the city. According to Commercial Edge, Manhattan's commercial vacancies reached 13.1% this February. Year-over-year, New York City's commercial vacancies increased by 260 basis points, the second-largest increase among major U.S. cities. Conversely, residential rates have already increased dramatically. According to the online site Apartment List, New York rents rose 33% from January 21 to January 22, double the national rate and the highest increase of America's largest cities. Current residents are discouraged from staying, and non-residents are discouraged from returning. So now the pending economic storm, and this is huge. 76% of all Fortune 500 CEOs, including Jamie Dimon, CEO of Chase, and Jane Fraser, CEO of Citibank, say they expect a recession in the next 18 months. Conclusion: Commercial occupancy is declining, rapidly rising residential rents drive renters away, and now a recessionary storm is brewing. My suggestion: Stable or even lower residential rents will bring more people back to the city faster, their companies will follow, business of all size may start to thrive. A win-win. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker... Just bear with me for a second... Is Assemblymember Forrest. Welcome, Assemblymember. Assemblymember, you're muted.
This is Hal Dorfman.
Oh, Hal, just hold on for a second. We're going to hear from Assemblymember Forrest, and then I think you're next, okay?
Thank you. I think I'm right now. Sorry about that. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Assemblymember Faris Soufran Forrest. I represent the 57th District in Brooklyn, and where there are over 16,000 rent-stabilized apartments. That's over 16,000 working people, seniors, and families whose lives will be impacted by the decision of the Board. I'm also a rent-stabilized tenant myself. I live at Ebbets Field Apartments in Brooklyn, in Crown Heights, along with other 1,300 families. Many of them are also struggling. They lost their jobs during the pandemic, and to be honest, the conditions at Ebbets Field are deplorable, it's nasty. It's unacceptable for this Board to ask my neighbors to pay 6% more when management does not even handle the basics of maintenance and safety in our development. A 6% rent increase is also too much for many of the families that I represent. 42% of the renters in my district make less than $50,000 a year. They are not getting a 6% pay increase at their jobs, though. In fact, many of them are already struggling to pay their bills, especially as inflation continues to get worse. New York State landlords are bailed out through the ERAP program, but tenants are still working to dig themselves out of the hole the pandemic put them in. The state legislature ended last week without addressing the housing crisis. We did not pass Good Cause Eviction, which would have kept unregulated tenants in their home and reduced the pressure on the housing market. The historic Right to Counsel was passed in the New York City Council in New York City in 2017, and is barely in effect because so many people are being evicted that tenant attorneys can't even keep up with all the cases. In this environment, the rent increases proposed by this Board will cause unnecessary hardship for thousands of families. So I'm asking, please, please consider a rent freeze so that we can really protect my constituents and the constituents of all other Assemblymembers in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember. Our next speaker is Hal Dorfman.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Just so you know, your camera is not on if you want it to be on.
That's fine. My name is Hal Dorfman. I am an architect, and I have, in the last eight years, owned an eight-family building here in the Northwest Bronx. So I have experience working for many landlords throughout the city during my career, as well as now managing and owning a building. Let me tell you, it's no pleasure being a landlord. I believe I live in a country that's operated by the rule of law. The last I heard, there was a 4.9% vacancy rate. One-tenth of a point more would make the rent stabilization law illegal. Once we hit a 5% vacancy rate, tenants and everybody else can scream, but the law says that the rent stabilization law becomes ineffective. I have been operating this building, and I started... I have been operating this building, and I started oil was less than a dollar thirty-five a gallon. Now I'm paying over five dollars a gallon for fuel oil. I haven't seen a tenant bend down to pick up a piece of garbage in the hallway that they throw. They leave their garbage bags in the hallway. Uh my costs are up. I agree with the first speaker. I agree with the Rent uh Association Guidelines Board. With with all the costs, we need a minimum at a four percent on a one-year lease and a six percent on a two-year lease. We've given in seven years, five percent. Our costs are quadruple that. What about people who own private property? If we want to make it a state mandate that people should be given housing subsidies, there's the New York City Housing Authority, there's state housing authorities. We can provide housing as a s- as a citizen trip, a citizenry. Do not put this on the backs of private owners. We need at least a four percent and a six percent increase just to maintain my building. I need new roofs. I need a new hot water heater. There are things that need to be done in E-RAP money. Let me tell you, once a landlord, I've heard this takes E-RAP money, that's it. Tenants stay for a year without paying after that. It's like a free ride. The rule of law is being trampled, and our country is going downhill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Michael Murray.
Yes, hello. Good evening, and thank you. Uh can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Murray, thank you. Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can.
All right, let's begin then. Uh during previous meetings and hearings, we've heard both tenants and small landlords talk about the financial hardships they face. The problem is that across-the-board rent increases are blunt instruments that inflict pain on all tenants without channeling financial relief specifically to the owners who may need it. Instead, granting windfall increases to profitable landlords at the expense of all struggling renters. This being the case, I urge the R G B to reject across-the-board rent increases and to support worthy landlords using the hardship process to obtain the relief they say they need. At least until the R G B has the means to enact rent increases that vary by location, age of building, percent of stabilized units in a structure, and other characteristics that would help fund relief to landlords that actually need it without needlessly penalizing tenants and enriching already profitable landlords. I'd also like to take a minute to comment on some of what I've heard about how rising interest rates are creating a hardship for owners. The fact is, many owners have the option to lock in rates at record lows. Rates peaked in the early eighties, declined for almost forty years, and in fact, are still near record lows. So the hardship hasn't materialized yet, and they're asking for an increase based on increases in financing costs when they themselves get to determine how much to borrow. And often, the borrowing is used to take cash out to fund completely unrelated projects. So we need to state of the facts, and we need to recognize that across-the-board increases don't do the job.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you for your testimony. Just bear with me while I wait for our next speaker to get promoted. We're still waiting for our next speaker. And I believe our next speaker is Robert Lee. Mr. Lee, um oh, hi, welcome.
How are you? Thank you for this opportunity to speak and for giving me time to unmute. It's not, I was just not familiar with this uh too well. Uh okay. Uh so we heard from Assembly uh members tonight. We heard from a senator, and they all mentioned, you know, rent freeze and that the small owners need uh help. What actually have they done for small owners? Because all their names appear on every anti-owner bill and law that has been passed out there. I have asked Assembly Member Gallagher numerous times to meet with our Spony um to discuss the Good Cause Bill and on the and other situations, and still no response. Um we are not given the proper increase for major renovations. The HSTPA limited us to fifteen thousand dollars over fifteen years. Uh no, it it doesn't work, not on, not even on a minor renovation. It certainly doesn't work on a major renovation, so many of us do not have the funds to renovate apartments so they stay vacant. Uh we are being bought out like hotcakes by developers. This industry will be lost forever. Uh there are no more user investors coming in uh where a, you know, a user would live in a building, rent out two or three units, whatever. It's all investors. Uh the regulate, the increase in regulation is just overwhelming. Um you you can't, you you, um I I I sympathize with with the tenants. I really do. I was very generous with mine during the pandemic. Um but you can't, you 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 can't base increases on what could be afforded. You have to base our increases on what our expenses are, and he, I I um has gone up about forty-five percent this year, and we have the usual double-digit increases in insurance and uh you and uh property taxes. We cannot sustain. And you're gonna have a city full of developers and NYCHA. And like I said, the industry will be lost forever, and uh it's not believable. The i- if you see NYCHA's record, they claim, oh, we're underfunded. It's not. It's mismanaged. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Helen Greenberg. Helen, you're muted, and your camera's not on if you want to turn on your camera. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time. I really appreciate it. My name is Helen Greenberg, and I'm a third-generation small property owner. Our family building is from eighteen sixty-nine. So what does that mean exactly to be a small property owner rebuilding from eighteen sixty-nine? It means constant care, repairs, and upgrades. How do you pay for all that constant care when in addition you were bombarded by rising course, costs of building insurance, property taxes, con Edison, and water and sewage increases, just to name a few? The Water Board is asking for a four-point-nine increase. One of the reasons is because the increase is so high because customers can't afford to pay their water bills. How do you pay for additional reasonable inspections and regulations from the city that we are, that we as owners incur, like annual fire extinguisher inspections, backflow inspections for mediating bedbugs, rodents, and late summer boiler inspections before winter heating season begins? Local Law one fifty-two for new gas lines and new lead inspections and costly remediations that are required. I recently did an abatement that passed with one company and failed with another lead company. I paid for the same window frame to be scraped and repainted twice by different lead inspectors. The cost's thousands of dollars. How do you pay your bills during COVID when half of your building moved out of the city and no one wanted to move back into the city for seven months? The tenants that stayed were primarily RSA tenants and rent control. Rents like seven-ten ninety-five, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. They stayed, in quotes. Several of our RSA tenants went to their upstate New York homes to escape COVID in the city. That's another topic, rent-stabilized renters who have second homes. It would be pretty amazing if you actually had to qualify for a rent-stabilized unit with your income. That's a tricky topic because there are several of our elected officials that just spoke that live in rent-stabilized units that wouldn't qualify for their most likely rent-stabilized legacy apartment. I am asking for a six percent one-year lease and an eight percent for a two-year lease.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Durico. Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Durico. I live in a rent-stabilized apartment in Peter Cooper Village. I'm also a member of the Peter Cooper Village Stuytown Tenants Association. I'm a lawyer by trade. I've spent hundreds of hours advocating for housing rights on a pro bono basis over the last couple of years. I've seen firsthand the struggle of everyday New Yorkers to afford rent. And for these reasons, I'm strongly opposed to the proposed renting increases, which are the highest in years. It is self-evident that our city is still recovering from the effects of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Per the Department of Labor and as cited by Assembly Member Glick earlier today, New York City's unemployment rate is almost double the national average and has spiked to as high as seven-point-six percent over the past couple of months. Further, New York City has lagging job growth. It's only regained seventy-three percent of the jobs lost in the pandemic compared to ninety-five percent on average for the nation. I don't think I need to explain to anyone that inflation is now more rampant than ever. These are not statements of opinion. These are facts. The proposed rent hikes could not come at a worse time for the average New Yorker. For instance, my wife is pregnant and is due to give birth within a week. Every dollar I have to spend on increased rent is a dollar I can't spend on childcare, a dollar I can't spend on food, and a dollar I can't spend on education. New York City is not a city where the wants of the few outweigh the needs of the many. For these reasons, the proposed rent hike should be rejected. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I see the remainder of my time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Nadine Korchak. Nadine, you're muted, and your camera's off if you want to go on camera. Nadine, you're still muted. Nadine, you're muted. Uh let's see, you do, uh nope, still. Andrew, no, wait, here we go. Nadine?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Um do you want to go on camera? You don't have to. You're just asking.
Yeah, you could go on ca- I could go on camera.
You're gonna need to control that from your end.
Well, that's okay then.
Okay.
I I'll just start.
We're ready for you.
Wait.
Uh that, we got you.
Yeah, she, uh, now I could go?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. My family has been a small mom-and-pop owner on the Upper West Side for more than eighty years. Along with the pandemic, all building expenses have skyrocketed. When De Blasio took office, our property taxes were sixty-two thousand. Now they're ninety thousand. For the first time, our accountant has told us that our best financial decision is to keep an apartment vacant. The years of low and no rent increases have had accumulative effects. The stabilized rent is too low to justify renovations. We don't have the cash to pay the mandated improvements to bring the apartment to COVID, electric, lead. So since we don't have the cash to pay for these mandated improvements, the next step would be to get financing. Well, when the bank looked at our books, why would I think they would give money to a business that loses money? The cumulative effect of low rents over the years has unfortunately brought us to where our building is today. And there are several other buildings on our block in the same situation. Our only choice is to keep the apartment vacant. Please don't force us to sell out. Operating expenses have skyrocketed, and our rent does not cover these expenses. Please pass the eight percent for two-year leases and six percent for one-year leases. This will help us maintain our aging housing stock. Thank you. And if I have two seconds left, our vacancy rate in for us is ten percent. And I just want to address the Assemblywoman and the Senators. All of our regulated apartments are occupied by multimillionaires. Our six-hundred-dollar rent apartment has a two-million-dollar beach house. So so I would love to sit down and talk about common sense rents for people who need them, and yet we give cheap rent to millionaires. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. All right, we're just waiting for our next speaker to be promoted.
David, Andrew asked me to um promote Alvin Doyle, but I'm having some trouble doing that. Um so if you'd just give me one minute.
Yep, we will.
Or Brian, can you try to do it?
I just did. Alvin Doyle, uh you are muted, um and you're not on camera in case you want to go on camera.
And?
Yep, I can hear you now, but I don't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay, well, I guess I have a voice for for uh being off camera.
Okay, we're ready for you.
Okay. Uh well, let me see. Let me see here. Okay.
Uh we got your face too. That's great.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, my name is Alvin Doyle, and I'm a rent-stabilized senior citizen living in Stuyvesant Town. I share my apartment with my wife Patricia, and we are both members of the Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village Tenants Association. As you may be aware, Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper were built by the Metropolitan Life Insurance Company to help New York City address the housing needs of military veterans returning to New York after the end of World War Two. Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village became a thriving middle-class community of solid, tax-paying citizens that helped turn New York City into the greatest city. With hundreds of thousands of households still struggling to recover from the COVID pandemic, including people in Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village, any rent increase will be damaging for too many people. A rent increase will have an outsized impact on low-income tenants with three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand low-income households living in rent-stabilized housing, twice the amount of those living in public and subsidized housing combined. I respectfully request a rent freeze. It is good course to protect all of our citizens. And remember, our tax-paying citizens are crucial to this city. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. All right, we're just waiting for our next speaker to be promoted. And we have Pablo Zavalos. Uh you're muted. Welcome.
Uh good evening. Thank you. My name is Pablo Zavios, and I'm a tenants' rights attorney testifying in support of a rent freeze. The case for a rent freeze is straightforward. The rent adjustments that this board has previously ordered for rent-stabilized units have substantially outpaced landlords' inflation-adjusted costs. Between nineteen ninety and twenty-twenty-one, in buildings containing rent-stabilized units, inflation-adjusted income from rent has increased by thirty-eight percent, while costs have increased by thirty-two percent, allowing net operating income to increase by forty-seven percent. Helping to drive that trend is that, according to a data analysis by Tim Collins, the rental increases that prior incarnations of this board have ordered have exceeded the increases necessary to maintain fixed operating cost-to-rent ratios and inflation-adjusted NOI by thirty-two percent. Indeed, these historical rent adjustment orders have enabled the very profiteering, the rent stabilization law was enacted to counter. This board can correct course now. Some may posit that inflation and collections as a result of COVID justify increases. Yet this board has not historically pegged its adjustment orders to inflation, including in years where real estate-specific costs have been higher than those frowned for twenty-twenty-one. And the decrease in rental collections in rent-stabilized units, four percent from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty, was modest, and NOI was identical in both years. While landlords' profits continue to grow and sales of buildings containing rent-stabilized units have rallied, tenant struggles continue to mount. Majority of the lowest-income renters pay, in turn, a majority of their incomes in rent. Fewer than one in one hundred apartments renting at under fifteen hundred dollars is vacant, and vouchers and accompanying fair housing enforcement are entirely short supply. With these tenants and still-growing landlord profits in mind, I urge this board to adopt a rent freeze opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Um our next speaker is Anna Reyes. Anna, welcome. Uh yes, we're ready for you.
Hola. Buenos tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Anna Reyes, y soy residente de Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el aumento en el alquiler de lo que nos, de lo que para nosotros los inquilinos es nuestro hogar. La razón por la cual estoy hoy levantando mi voz como inquilina. Cada vez que ustedes quieren aumentar el precio de la renta, yo me empiezo a preocupar más de lo habitual. Porque tengo que preocuparme en elegir si comer una vez al día es suficiente para ahorrar y tener la cantidad suficiente para poder pagar la cantidad que los caseros quieren aumentar. Pero yo debo restar- Pero yo debo restar menos horas de descanso, menos horas de sueño, tranquilidad mental y emocional. Pero no aumenta en mi salario ni mi descanso. Y lo más importante es que si los caseros siguen aumentando el alquiler, me es imposible tener un hogar, lo cual es la base fundamental de cualquier persona. No más aumentos y más viviendas aceptibles. Gracias.
Great. And our next speaker, I just see a phone number ending in 654. You're muted.
It's Dario Garro.
Say the name again, Danielle.
Dario Garro.
Dario, your phone is muted. Danielle, can you remind people what they need to do to unmute on a phone?
If you're on the phone, please press star six to unmute yourself.
They dropped from the panel. Danielle, do you want to promote somebody else in the interim, and we'll try to get Dario back on?
I just wanted to flag, David, that I've emailed you and Andrew some names that are testifying together on a Zoom account, on the same Zoom account, just so that it's flagged and they don't get skipped.
Okay, and Shayla, are they registered speakers or they're?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, Shayla, they are registered. Which account are they under, though? That was?
Okay, sorry. I just want to make sure that I get. Is D? Oh, should I say that email? Can I just email you?
Yeah, email me. That was the problem. You put the names down, and they did pre-register, but you didn't put the person's.
Okay, I'll send you the person's name.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Perfect. Sorry, Shayla, should I move on to the next speaker? Okay, our next speaker is Hannah Yukon. Welcome. You're muted.
When we threaten the lives of the people who serve us, who cook for us, who deliver our food, who clean our streets, who teach our kids and create art in New York City that makes New York City what New York City is, we lose the ability to stay connected in truth, love, and unity. When we choose the economics, which, let's remind each other, is a made-up construct, like time, money, and rent, because land is free, water is free, and air is free, we deprioritize the lives of the very people who make New York City what it is, a vibrant, beautiful, magical place to love and create. As an artist and educator and as an ex-New York City Realtor, I've seen my kids go homeless while luxury apartments go up right next to the very schools they attend. These kids are our future, and when we threaten their lives and put the safety of their families at risk, you put New York City at risk of losing its magic and vibrancy. The rent increase will affect the most vulnerable communities. And going off of book, we already know this. This is not anything we already need to write a thing. We know this. And I'm speaking from the heart, 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 and you know this as well. I'm not calling for a rent freeze. I'm calling for a rent cancellation, mortgage cancellation. If it takes us to use one of those empty commercial units to come together as a community to talk about how we can use the money off of Wall Street to take 50% off of brokerage commissions to put that back into the pockets of the people who are making New York City what it is. These are solutions. We can talk all we want, but we need solutions. And they're out there. That's the thing. The solutions are out there. Take all of us together. Thank you for this platform to talk. And find these solutions as well. I don't know when my time is up. I'm going to keep going until the bell goes off. I wanted to make a song and walk the walk because I feel like connecting us back to the human parts of what this is is really going to make New York City and homelessness and depressed production entirely beautiful.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay. Waiting for our next person to be promoted. I'm not sure if someone, I hear some little background noise. If someone thinks they may need to be muted, they may want to do that. I'm not sure who it is. I just hear some whispering. And I'll just take the time to remind people. If you can speak a little slowly, that will be of great assistance to our interpreters, who have to kind of simultaneously process what you're saying and then translate it into another language. So we all need to make an effort in that regard. This is just a reminder. And I think our next speaker is Jinghe Feng. And your camera's on, but you are muted. Yeah, we're ready for you, but you are. You're all good to go. Welcome. We're not hearing you. I'm not sure. Still no sound. I think we had sound at some point. It's just not picking up.
If you joined using your computer and you didn't join sound, you're going to have to rejoin or activate it by clicking the little arrow next to the mute, going to the mic, and seeing if it will allow you to select the mic there.
Andrew, maybe it also makes sense to promote someone else in the interim, and then if there's a technical issue, we can take the next person, and they could work on their technical issue from their end. Okay.
Andrew, Mark Levine is here.
I'm sorry.
President Mark Levine is here.
Okay. So why don't we? Mr. Feng, is it okay if we try speaking now, Mr. Feng? Yes, we can hear you now.
I'm Feng Junhai. I mainly talk about the financial question.
We can't hear the interpretation really well. I'm so sorry to interrupt. We can't hear the interpretation. The interpreter got closer to the mic so that we can hear what is being translated.
So we can hear?
We've lived in this district for more than 28 years.
The interpreter is very faint. We can hear you, but we can't really hear you well.
Okay, is this better?
It's better.
Is this better? Okay, I'm gonna, yeah.
I just hope that our rent growth is not too high. It should be controlled at 2% or so.
In the time that I have lived in my apartment, I have seen my rent double. And all that I ask is that we rent limit rent increases. I would like to ask that a fair rent increase be 2% over the next two years.
Huge increase is really affecting us. We can't expect huge increase after retirement. Because we are already retired. Just this, I just suggest.
Thank you. This is my recommendation to the board.
Thank you for your testimony. And are we going to Borough President Levine next? Am I getting that right? Yes. Borough President, welcome. You're muted and your camera's off.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I don't see you in case you want to be on camera.
Let's see if I can fix that. I may have a technical issue with the camera, and I would hate to hold you up for that reason. Would it be okay if I proceed without the camera, or do you want me to take a few minutes to fix that?
It's your choice. We're more than happy just to listen.
Okay, if you don't mind, we'll do that. Apologies for being off camera, but grateful for the chance to speak to all of you. So can I begin?
Yes, please. Welcome.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Chair Reese. My name again is Mark Levine, Manhattan Borough President. And I'm speaking on behalf of my fellow Manhattan colleagues, Councilmembers Powers, Abreu, Menon, Rivera, Bacher, Ayala, Marte, and De La Rosa. I'd like to thank you and members of the board for this opportunity to testify this evening. We're testifying today to ask that the Rent Guidelines Board fairly weigh the challenges brought upon tenants across the city by the pandemic, as well as the tenuous nature of our economic recovery in any decision regarding potential increases in rent for stabilized units. This is not the time to increase rents for rent-stabilized tenants, and it is our strong belief that there should be no increase. It's our understanding that the board is considering a 2% to 4% increase for one-year leases and 4% to 6% increases for two-year leases in rent-stabilized units, largely due to concerns regarding rising costs for property owners. We agree that these concerns must be taken into account by the board, and that it is not the board's responsibility to unilaterally make housing affordable, irrespective of the cost incurred by owners to maintain it. However, over the past three decades, the board has authorized rent increases that far exceeded what would have otherwise been required to keep pace with building operating costs and inflation. Though the board has issued guidelines that have been lower in recent years, the long-term gains enjoyed by property owners is still far beyond what may have been required to maintain and operate their property. Furthermore, it's unclear whether concern for increasing costs of operating and managing property, an increase of 4.2%, according to the board, is accurate. It's our understanding that little has been done to determine whether the price index of operating costs, the so-called PIOC, is correct. The age and condition of the housing stock plays a vital role in the operating and management. Am I able to continue? I apologize. I realize.
Yeah, if you take a few seconds to finish up, we'd be grateful.
Okay, fair enough. I'll try and summarize the rest of my remarks. I appreciate it, Chair Weiss. Our position is that the analysis of the PIOC is now far out of date because the last audits were conducted 30 years ago. And we are also aware of the escalating number of actions by tenants in New York City's civil courts, HP Actions, seeking orders to repair, which does suggest that owners are in fact ignoring obligations for maintenance. And finally, the timing is critical in that New York City is still coming out of the pandemic with lives and livelihoods so terribly disrupted across the five boroughs with real economic hardship, lost income, and many jobs that have not yet been recovered, even at this stage in the pandemic. And we're acutely aware of the large number of housing court cases currently active, over 75,000 in housing court, with 7,000 new cases filed every month. So because of this, because of the terrible crisis in homelessness, we are requesting as a group, myself and my city council colleagues, that there be a rent freeze, which we believe would be most appropriate at this time. So thank you for bearing with my technical difficulties and allowing me a little extra time. I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Borough President. Thank you for your testimony. And we're just waiting for our next speaker to be promoted. And we have. She's there, Maggie Sanchez? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. We're ready for you. We can hear you, I believe, but we don't see you in case you want to turn on your camera.
No, it's okay. Hi. So according to the Coalition for the Homeless, as of January 2022, approximately 48,413 city residents were homeless, including 15,057 children. As a domestic violence survivor, I know what it is like to be unhoused. I know what it is like to end up in a domestic violence shelter along with my child, who is diagnosed with autism. This means that, according to the numbers, this means that 50, almost 20,000 single adults slept in shelters each night in January 2022, which is a near record. The increases that were voted on are unattainable for tenants like me. If property taxes and other issues are the problem for owners, putting more tens of thousands of families just like me out in the street does not solve this problem. The 2% and 4% for the year increase and 4% and 6% two-year increase or more, even 8%, does not, does not, it's just unattainable with all of the inflation and all the costs and all the costs around the city that are, that are, that are right now happening. So there is no way for tenants like me to pay that. So what is going to be the solution to that? The board must consider this. The board must consider. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and your testimony. And we're just waiting for the next person to be promoted. And I'll just take this as an opportunity to, actually, a number of our speakers have spoken in a very reasonable pace, which is great. And those of us who are a little hyperactive and are speaking, just remember the interpreters are trying to keep up with us as we speak. So please keep that in mind while you present your testimony. We're just waiting for someone to be promoted. That's why there's silence if you're just listening in. Just reporting in. We're just waiting for, did I see someone? No. And we have Spencer Garcia. Welcome.
Hi.
Hey, you're ready to go. We can hear you and we can see you. Welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Spencer Garcia. I'm a lifelong New Yorker, and I'm currently living in a rent-stabilized apartment in Kew Gardens, Queens. I'm asking the Rent Guidelines Board to vote for a rent freeze. I'm asking for a rent freeze because any rent increase will force hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers out of their homes and force hundreds of thousands more to forego paying for food, medical care, and other necessities in order to pay for their rent. 365,000 low-income households live in rent-stabilized housing, twice the amount who live in public and subsidized housing combined. Any rent increases will directly lead to evictions, homelessness, and death. People will die if they can no longer afford the food or medication they need to survive, if they are forced to move into a crowded shelter and contract COVID, or if they freeze or sweat to death from living on the streets. This death is completely avoidable. Nobody should have to pay over 30% of their income on rent, and yet over half of New Yorkers are rent burdened. Amidst the ongoing pandemic and ever-increasing inflation, the number of rent-burdened New Yorkers continues to increase. Personally, my rent is over 40% of my monthly income. I spent over two and a half months looking for my current apartment because I could only afford to pay so much on rent without getting into a situation where I would become financially unstable or housing insecure. If I was not living in a rent-stabilized apartment, I would not. I would not have been able to afford a studio apartment in Kew Gardens, let alone most areas of Queens or New York City as a whole. We have gotten to a point where people from New York can barely afford to stay here and freezing rent will help keep New Yorkers in their homes. Lastly, hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of New York City households are still dealing with the ramifications of the ongoing pandemic. People have experienced unemployment, loss of income due to death of a family member, permanent disability and inability to work due to long COVID, and many more extremely difficult financial situations. With no end in sight of the pandemic, New Yorkers will continue to struggle to pay rent and afford their basic needs. A 2% increase is too much for New York City tenants, any rent increase is too much for New York City tenants. This is why I'm asking you to vote for a rent freeze.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we're just waiting for our next speaker to be promoted. And I have a speaker, I just have a first name Denise. And Denise, you're muted and you're not on camera, if you want to be on camera.
Yeah, we believe someone has a watch party that has four people pre-registered to speak with them, so if that's the case, please, please let us know.
All right, yes, we can see you and I think we can hear you. I'm not sure yet if I can hear you, you're not muted though, so that's good. I think I'm hearing you now.
Okay, I registered my members.
Yeah, so make sure that each person says their name and then just testifies and we can just move through them.
Okay.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es...
Welcome, welcome, we look forward to your testimony.
Vivo en el 720 de Gran Street. Quería agradecer por esta oportunidad de tener una opción virtual para los inquilinos como yo. No podían asistir en persona. Quería compartir mi preocupación acerca del incremento de renta. Pido que no haya un incremento de renta este año porque hay muchos inquilinos como yo que apenas estamos recuperándonos de la pandemia. La pandemia nos afectó a todos emocionalmente y económicamente. En lo personal, mi esposo se enfermó a principios de la pandemia y no trabajamos hasta finales del año. Tuve que pedir dinero prestado para sobrevivir y hasta la fecha estoy pagando el dinero que pedí prestado para pagar mi alquiler y no me desalojaran con mis hijos. Mi hija le daba miedo que nos desalojaran y por ella me vi obligada a conseguir el dinero para pagar mi alquiler. No quisiera volver a pasar por lo mismo. Por eso espero que nos escuchen y que no, no hagan el aumento, el incremento de renta por este año. Gracias.
Thank you, I'm not sure if we got that speaker's name, did we get the name of the speaker?
Yeah, her name is Claudia Juárez.
Claudia Juárez, oh, we did, I'm sorry, my apologies. So, we didn't initially, but she just said it was Claudia, so.
Okay, and to our next speaker.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lucero Caiñón. Soy miembro activa de mi comunidad y organización comunitaria ubicada en Williamsburg y Greenway. Como organización, luchamos contra el desplazamiento, el acoso de los inquilinos de nuestra comunidad. Yo creo, quiero agradecer a la Junta por la oportunidad de tener una opción virtual para los inquilinos como yo, que no podía asistir en persona. Como inquilina, le pido a la Junta que por favor no, no aumentó por la razón que habíamos tantas personas ahorita en este momento, por esta epidemia, no el trabajo, no aumento de sueldo, muchas personas enfermas y personas solas. Yo, personalmente, que vivo de un security que no me alcanza para un aumento como ustedes lo piensan hacer. Todo, en primer lugar, todo estamos como esta epidemia y todas las cosas más encima, un aumento y de alquiler, no, no da más la cara a la cosa. Los dueños de los edificios dejándose, ellos están perdiendo los dueños que tienen, diez hasta diez edificios. Si en cuanto apartamentos cobrando y otros demasiado caros. Ellos dicen que están perdiendo algún apartamento, pero eso es mentira porque ellos en un aparte, en un edificio tienen más de diez apartamentos y cuánto vale cada apartamento cuando lo alquilan? Yo me creo que esto no es ninguna pérdida. Ahora, ellos están usando edificios que lo tienen vacantes para después decir que están perdiendo y que lo que hacen es que después lo alquilan más caro. Yo le pido a la Junta, por favor, y a los vigiladores aquí en la ciudad, que nos apoyen nosotros y que vean para la gente pobre y no para los millonarios. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos.
Welcome.
Mi nombre es Catalina Miramón y vivo en el 196, el 196 de Yurun por 25 años. Quiero decirles que ahí, en estos 25 años que llevo viviendo, he visto muchos cambios buenos y malos. Como por ejemplo, la zona ya es más segura que antes. Cuando yo salgo, ya no veo peleas como hace 25 años. Eso es algo bueno. Pero también quiero decirles que por lo mismo han hecho nuevos edificios y con estos edificios han incrementado demasiado las rentas, puedo decir que al triple. Ahí donde yo estoy viviendo, estoy viviendo en una renta controlada, pero en los edificios que están al frente y al lado son unas, unas rentas demasiado caras que yo me pongo a pensar que jamás las podría yo pagar. Ahora, otra cosa triste, muchas personas que vivían ahí tuvieron que ser desplazadas por el mismo incremento de renta. Unos familiares se tuvieron que ir porque a ellos les subieron demasiado, demasiado la renta. Entonces, para uno es muy difícil pagarlo. Les, también quiero decirles que una cosa muy personal, que por lo de la pandemia que vivimos, mi esposo se enfermó y sigue estando enfermo, ya ahorita tiene seis meses que él no trabaja. Entonces, pues, para mí es muy difícil si hacen ese incremento, no podré pagar la renta. Me pongo a pensar, ¿a dónde me voy a ir? Las cosas están muy difíciles, no podré pagar más. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Theresita Aguilar. Vivo en el 391 de Lorimer Street durante 37 años. Ubicado en Brooklyn, New York, soy miembro activa de United Aid for Organization. Una organización comunitaria ubicada en Williamsburg y Greenway. Como organización de los inquilinos en nuestra comunidad. Quería agradecer a la Junta por esta oportunidad de tener opción virtual para los inquilinos que como yo no podían asistir en persona. Quiero compartir, como miembro activo de la organización, he conocido la situación de abuso de los caseros contra los inquilinos. Por lo tanto, pido la Honorable Junta que los, que no aumente la renta para que los inquilinos tengan más tiempo de superar las consecuencias de la pandemia. Y por un año y dos, sea cero el aumento. El aumento que están pidiendo los caseros es exagerado pues no hacen arreglos y solo presionan a abandonar los apartamentos. Los caseros mienten al decir que justifican los aumentos por los altos costos de mantenimiento, sabiendo que las... Sabiendo que los presupuestos y pérdidas se deben a la cantidad de los apartamentos vacíos y cerrados mientras que la gente está sufriendo en las calles por falta de vivienda. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're gonna move on to... Thank you Denise, we're gonna move on to Sarah McDaniel Dyer, who is muted and not on camera, if you want to be on camera, Sarah. You're still muted, just FYI.
Hi, sorry, I'm on my way home from work. Okay, hi, I'm Sarah McDaniel Dyer and I've lived in my apartment in Inwood for 15 years. The only reason I've been able to keep my apartment is because it's stabilized. We need to reckon with the fact that minimum wage in this city is $13.20 an hour and that's a smidgen above $100 a day. Let's say my rent goes up $50. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but that's half a week's groceries for a family of two. That's one can of baby formula for a special needs newborn and it's another half a day you have to work if you make minimum wage. What does this city get for that extra $50 a month? If you want a neighborhood to thrive, you need long-term tenants. You need families and we're making it impossible for people to stay here. Last weekend, I had to help the last of my original neighborhood friends pack up to move to Pennsylvania where she will get a four-bedroom house for less than her one-bedroom here. I really, really want to raise my child in New York, but I'm middle-class and I honestly don't know if we can financially do it. Everyone I know who's had a child has moved out of the state because it costs too much to live here. Who benefits from these rent increases when we know almost everyone is rent burdened? Why do we continue to give money to people who give us culturally intangibly nothing in return? I haven't had a pay increase since before the pandemic, why should my landlord get one? If he needed the money so badly, why doesn't he just rent out the apartment on the first floor that's been open since my neighbor died in 2020? This isn't about landlord needs, it's about their greed. The shit that made New York one of the best cities on the planet is people like Patti Smith and Basquiat could pay their rent with a painting before anyone knew their name. If you want to keep New York alive, you need to keep it affordable, pull the rents back. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Nova Lucero.
Hola.
Hola, you're not, you're not on camera if you would like to be on camera.
Soy una organizadora de inquilinos y también soy una inquilina aquí en el Bronx. Y yo testifico esta noche para una reducción de alquiler. La mayoría de personas que testifican aquí son inquilinas y es porque el impacto de estas decisiones del RGB cae más en los inquilinos que los dueños. Por lo menos, los dueños pueden vender el edificio si ganan poco dinero, pero inquilinos no pueden mudarse tan fácilmente. El alquiler aquí está alta actualmente y por esta razón hay muchas personas sin hogar. En mi vecindario ya he visto el cambio desde que empezó la pandemia hasta ahora porque aunque hubo un tiempo de, de no desalojar a inquilinos, los dueños todavía lo estaban haciendo. Todos aquí, todos los miembros del RGB lo saben. No importa dónde vives, todos los ven que hay muchas personas más sin hogar que antes. Nuestros vecinos están en las calles, están deprimidos, están enfermos y todo por el estrés de prender trabajos, por prender sus hogares. Nosotros como inquilinos somos los trabajadores, somos los trabajadores esenciales de esta ciudad y si nosotros no hay ciudad, por favor, reducen la renta ahora. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony.
David, can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
For the people in attendance, when you, if you pre-registered, it was noted to you that the name that you provided in your registration has to match the name that you signed into Zoom with. We have a lot of people today that pre-registered that we're not finding in the attendee list. It may be because we can't find you because your name is different. I would suggest, if you think that's the case, that you sign out, that you sign completely out of Zoom, you might be sharing that account with another person and sign back in with the name that you registered with. We have no other way to find you if the name is different. At the end of the hearing, if there's time, we will open it up to unregistered speakers and then you would have a chance to also speak. But if you have registered and you think you've been passed, you might want to consider that.
Quisieremos dejarles saber a las personas que están acá con nosotros que si usted se inscribió para esta, para este evento y ahora ha entrado al Zoom con un teléfono o número telefónico o nombre diferente, no le podemos encontrar en la lista, tal vez por eso tengamos que saltarle en la lista. Si usted cree que ha entrado al Zoom con esa situación, por favor, salga completamente de Zoom, vuelva a entrar, pero por favor, entre con el teléfono y nombre que nos dio cuando usted se inscribió por adelantado. De lo contrario, tendrá que esperar hasta el final, hasta que terminemos con todas las personas que se asignaron hoy día para poder hablar y declarar y si tenemos tiempo al final, le descederemos ese tiempo a usted para que lo haga. Muchas gracias.
Our next speaker is Sarah Lazar. Sarah, you're muted and you're not on camera, if you want to be on camera.
Hi, sorry about that.
No worries.
Great, yeah, hi, my name is Sarah Lazar and I live on St. Mark's Avenue in Brooklyn. And like thousands of New Yorkers, I lost my job during the pandemic and while I've gotten work, it's less than before and my rent burden is now 60% of my income. And I'm one of the lucky people in my neighborhood because my previous job paid okay, I had a retirement account and I know I'll recover eventually, but the pandemic was a huge setback. I'd never been on unemployment before in my life, I spent my savings on rent and utilities and the cumulative effects also mean down the road that I'll have to, I'm gonna have to retire a year or two later, if not more. And like so many of my neighbors, my whole life has taken a rollback and I think it's only right for the rent to roll back to compensate for the hardship this pandemic has placed on middle-class, working-class, and poor New Yorkers alike. Rent stabilized tenants don't have assets to refinance or sell off when catastrophe hits and for decades, they have been enriching landlords, the vast majority of whom have multiple properties, giving them continuous profits even in times of economic crisis. As a member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union, I have seen dozens of rent histories and they show how the system has been stacked against us. Our rents are already inflated, not only because of past RGB votes, but also because landlords harassed countless previous tenants out of their homes, racking up 20% vacancy bonuses, eventually deregulating half the neighborhood. And that's not even including the rampant fraud we find in our rent histories. Lastly, many landlords in Crown Heights took out huge mortgages on their buildings based on a business model of displacement and deregulation. And now that HSDPA has taken away the most egregious loopholes, these landlords are asking you to force their tenants to pay for their unwise gambles in the past while those tenants are struggling to see any future stability at all. And that's why these landlords' complaints of economic hardship right now are kind of offensive. So we need a 9% rent rollback to, at least to even begin to do right by New York City tenants. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Michael Perlis. Michael, you're muted and not on camera, if you want to be on camera. Okay, we got you, please, let's hear your testimony.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great, okay, hi, thanks, my name's Mike Perlis, I'm a rent stabilized tenant and I don't currently have a lease because my landlord is refusing to renew my lease. He waited about six months to renew my lease when the rent increase was higher than when I showed him DHCR Fact Sheet Number Four, that said I was entitled to a rent increase that was applicable the day after my lease expired. He has ignored me, he's ignored me for the past year and I've been without a lease even though I'm entitled to a lease. that was applicable the day after my lease expired. He has ignored me, he's ignored me for the past year and I've been without a lease, even though I'm entitled to one as a rent-stabilized tenant. So I just want to quickly show a few photos of the inside of my apartment. This is this morning at eleven fifty-five AM. This is a cockroach the size of about my thumb. Here's a cockroach on my stairwell about the size of my finger. I'm not sure if you can see that. This is the window behind me. You can see a crack in my window frame that goes to the outside of my apartment building. This is the pipe. You can't see that. To the left of me, the ceiling is crumbling down. This is my kitchen floor. And so it's interesting that we're talking about this threshold wherein, once we magically pass it, landlords will start improving our buildings. I know for a fact that's not going to happen. If my rent increase is twenty percent, my landlord's not, my landlord's not fixing my building. My upstairs neighbor is a market rate tenant. They pay about twice what I pay. They may have a roach infestation. So what is this magical increase number where landlords are going to start making improvements? You know, I just want to, people on the board whose vote affects a million households to know that you're not voting on whether or not landlords are going to make improvements to their buildings. Like I said, they're not going to do that. You're voting on a single parent staying an hour later at work, being away from their families an hour longer to make ends meet. Your one thousand three hundred and fifty babies in the past year were born in the hospital and went directly to a homeless shelter. And so those two things are not equivalent. A children, children being born into homeless shelters and Eric Ulrich, you know, having some extra money to go golfing. So if you think those two are equivalent, you should vote for a rent increase. If you don't think those two are equivalent, you should vote for a rent rollback. Or at the very least a rent freeze. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Lyric Thompson. Welcome. We can see you, but you're currently muted.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to testify. I am in a rent-stabilized apartment that is stabilized pursuant to the four twenty-one A section of the real property tax law. Now, my apartment and my building was not properly registered. The landlord lied for the first six years of my tenancy. In fact, I only learned that we were subject to stabilization after he evicted one tenant on a holdover and another tenant came to me concerned that he was going through the building, which he was. We've had to deal with DCR for seven years. It's been problematic and traumatic, to say the least. Coming out of this pandemic, I'm just going to be blunt, people cannot afford this. You cannot get blood from a stone. So what's going to happen is people are going to lose their homes. Now, I am not unsympathetic to small owners. I would be more than happy to petition the city council as well as the Assembly and State Senate to create a program for small owners to cover their extra expenses if needs be. But displacing millions of New Yorkers is not the answer. And to do this coming out of a pandemic, I mean, I have to ask, are you insane? I mean, where do you think people are going to get this money? Honestly, where? Selling blood, plasma, maybe? I mean, how much do you get for a pint of plasma and how often can you donate? I mean, these are the questions that you need to be asking yourself when you ask for a six percent rent increase from people that are already financially burdened and devastated due to the past two years of COVID. And let's not pretend it's over, people. It's not, it's not. You know, we need to start evolving our thoughts on landlord in, in the first place. I mean, housing is a human right. Every, every living being is entitled to have a place to lay their head at night. Now, the question you need to ask yourselves is, do you want that to be in a home or do you want it to be under the bridge or at the metro or in a shelter? It's up to you. I ask for a rent freeze or rollback and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for, for your time and have a nice evening.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jennifer Epstein. Jennifer, you're muted.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you very much for taking the time this evening. I've lived in my current apartment in Brooklyn for almost ten years. It's always been a struggle being a single-income household to keep up with the rent paycheck to paycheck. But I've managed and I've never missed a month's rent before. The proposed rent hikes will change everything. I'll be wiped out completely and forced to move out of New York to another state entirely. The cost of living in New York, stagnant wages and inflation alone, in my opinion, and I know other tenants on this call feel the same way, is wildly out of step with these proposed rent hikes. I mean, especially during COVID, these hikes are quite candidly inhumane. It'll be forcing hundreds of thousands of rent-stabilized tenants out of their homes displaced with nowhere else to go. And I really think that a rent freeze or a rent rollback is, is the right thing to do. If we're really looking at a compromise, then I would say zero percent for one and one percent for two. I also like on another, a lot of tenants on this call, I am not seeing where the, what, what building maintenance is going on that landlords are discussing. I have not, the only maintenance or improvements that I've seen are on individual apartment units that are, have construction going on for, to increase rents. I have not seen any maintenance on my building. The heat is on in when it's seventy degrees and off when it's twenty degrees. So I'm, I'm just not sure what this is in reference to. But I know that I speak for other tenants on this, this call that this would really change our lives if, if these, if these rent increases go through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Suzie Schrop. Do I have your name properly?
Yes, that's correct.
We look forward to your testimony.
Okay, my name is Suzie Schrop. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant in the East Village. My brother and I have lived in our apartment for thirty-two years. I'm still trying to bounce back from the COVID economic depression where I lost seventy-six percent of my income. I work in the creative industry and while New York real estate is on fire, we ordinary people are still struggling. I live a very frugal lifestyle, rarely go shopping and get everything from free online community listings. Sometimes I qualify for SNAP, but not always. My healthcare does not, does not cover the care I need, especially dental care. Last year, I visited my family for the first time in seven years. They chipped in to help with travel expenses. Sometimes I consider becoming a freegan where I get almost expired but still edible food from dumpsters for free. I also started working as a CUNY adjunct. I get paid for four to seven contact hours per week for a twenty to thirty-hour week, weekly workload, a meager income. I emphasize with the small landlords and believe they should receive subsidies from the state as even double-digit increases would only be a drop in the bucket for them. My landlords are the Shalom family who collectively own almost a hundred and fifty rental buildings in New York City, the majority of them deregulated. The mark, the market is as hot as ever for them. This year's proposed hefty rent increase will add to my growing hardship of over fifty percent rent burden. I urge the board to reconsider and allow working New Yorkers like me more time to recover through a rollback or a zero percent increase. Thank you for your undivided attention.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker. We're waiting for someone to be promoted. Here we go. Diane Stein. Diane, your camera's not on and you're muted. Okay, I think you're unmuted. Oh, and your camera's on. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Diane Stein. I live in Independence Plaza, a former Mitchell Lama rental located in Tribeca. When our landlords took us out of the program, we were not covered under rent stabilization. Stellar Management is our landlord. They're not a small mom-and-pop landlord. They own several complexes, not just in New York, but nationally. There are several hundred tenants that are stabilized through an agreement with the landlord that mimics rent stabilization. So there rises and falls, rises according to the guidelines. Now, these are people who helped build the neighborhood. We built schools, parks, grocery stores, other amenities that now make Tribeca a desirable place to live. And we stayed and we helped each other through nine eleven, Superstorm Sandy and now COVID. We are still active in our community and we vote. The market rate tenants are not able to stay here because the landlord can raise the rents to help whatever they want and they're not even obligated to, to renew their leases. So our once-tight-knit community has become more transient and the neighborhood has become more gentrified. The original tenants are being pushed out. This is a loss to the city and to humanity. I feel like we are being discarded. I'm asking for a rent rollback or if not a rent rollback, then a rent freeze. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. We're just waiting for someone to be promoted. And we have Samantha Bravo. Samantha, your camera's off and you're, you're muted. So there we go. We can see you and I think we hear you. Welcome.
My name is Samantha Bravo and I am with Neighbors Helping Neighbors. First off, I want to express my extreme disappointment towards Mayor Adams for not holding in-person hearings in Brooklyn despite being the Brooklyn Borough President for eight years. Now, my question to all of you is, why should there be a rent increase when most tenants live in poverty and in bad living conditions? I do not understand why my parents and other tenants should be paying more in rent when our landlords are abusive and our apartments need repairs. It is not right to raise rent prices when gas is at an all-time high and basic essentials are increasing as well, such as food. We need a rollback of rent because tenants cannot afford to pay more rent. My mother is one of many New York tenants who work at a job that does not pay enough to handle hundreds of dollars more of rent. Many of you can easily vote against tenants without experiencing the impact that your vote has on low-income minority tenants. It's easy for you to vote to increase rent while going to bed and sleeping peacefully. If you are voting to increase rent, you are voting for more people on the streets. If you are voting to increase rent, you are voting for more people to mentally and physically work themselves to exhaustion. If you are voting to increase rent, you are supporting abusive landlords and inhumane living conditions. Though it is never the right time to increase rent, we are still in a pandemic and people still need time to get back on their feet. Please do not vote for a rent increase. Vote for a rent decrease or for a rent freeze. Thank you for listening and have a good night.
Just shout out to you Samantha for testifying since being super young and seeing you throughout the years. And I'm apologizing for the fact that you have to testify every year for your parents and for your community. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Jackson. Welcome.
Hi, can everyone hear me from the board?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay, I'm ready for the timer to go up.
Sure.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Once again, I'm here tonight to urge the board to vote for rent frees. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I'm also a lawyer and I currently live in Kew Gardens, Queens. I'm a tenant that does actually not live in a rent-stabilized unit. I'm in a co-op. And I'm currently dealing with my landlord wanting to raise my rent. I got a text message today about it as a matter of fact. This is incredibly stressful. It's negatively impacting my life as we speak. For months, I've experienced the uncertainty of not knowing how much my rent would go up, whether and where I may have to move and how that might also impact my ability to get to work. And my type of experience, which is not, you know, there's a very common experience and it's exactly why rent protections and rent-stabilized apartments are so necessary in the city. And for the hundreds and thousands of New Yorkers who are low-income and rely on the protections of rent stabilization, any increase in rent is a direct threat to their security, their ability to care for their family and their ability to remain safe, given that we are still in a pandemic, as many people have mentioned. And we're actively in the middle of a surge in cases and we're seeing more and more people become disabled and unable to work. And nothing that I'm talking about right now is merely hypothetical. An increase in rent for New Yorkers has already, increases in rent for New Yorkers has already far exceeded any increases to the average New Yorker salary. I've seen countless friends, loved ones and community members since I've been here my whole life be displaced from their neighborhoods. And many of those people had no choice but to leave New York entirely and aren't coming back. And I'm also sure the members of the board are aware of the number of vacant apartments that, you know, are in the city and the fact that that number has skyrocketed since the pandemics began. The cost of living in the city is unconscionable and the most marginalized New Yorkers have felt and continue to feel that reality. At this point in the evening, I'm sure that the board has, you know, heard and listened to dozens. I'm, I'm almost done. I just need a few more seconds. At this point, the board has heard dozens and dozens of stories of New Yorkers who just want to be able to afford their home, safe and affordable housings, a human right. And that's why I'm again urging the board for a rent freeze. Two percent is two percent too many. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your testimony. And we're just going to wait for our next speaker to be promoted. Still waiting, just for those of you who are listening, still waiting for our next speaker to be promoted. And I think we have Nathan Bravo. You're muted and your camera's not on if you want your camera on. Yeah. Welcome, Nathan.
Hi, my name is Nathan Bravo Hortero and I am a member of Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I'm here to talk about the landlord raising the rent. This is why it matters. When the rent gets higher, our parents will start to work more and us kids will have to do things ourselves. And if we can't pay the rent, we will get kicked out of our homes. But think about us children. For the landlord, it's like, I want to get more money and kick you out. But it's not always about the money. Think about us kids like me. My main point is stop raising the rent. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nathan.
Gracias, Nathan.
And our next speaker is Sherri Combe.
La siguiente persona que va a hablar es Sherri Coin.
Sherri, yes, we're ready for you.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to share my story. I have lived in my rent-stabilized apartment, my home, for over eight years now. That is the longest I've lived anywhere in my adult life. That's why it's my home. Without this apartment, I would not be able to live in the city where my family has lived for generations. I used to work at a nonprofit. I loved helping people, but my salary was scandalously low. And any nonprofit worker here knows what I'm talking about. I was only able to stay in New York City because of my rent-stabilized apartment. Now I work in education. I love what I do. It pays a bit better, but not that much. I kept my job during the pandemic. I was one of the lucky ones, but my salary was cut. It's been restored, but with inflation, I'm making less now than before the pandemic. So tell me, how can my rent go up when my salary hasn't? In fact, when my salary has gone down, how am I supposed to pay that? Where is that money going to come from? And others like me, who is going to support the institutions in this city? Who's going to work there? Who's going to get the service jobs done? Who's going to get those administration jobs come? They get people coming to the city. When, where are they all going to go when there's nowhere for us to live? I'm one of the lucky ones. Like I said, I still have my job, but I'm here today in solidarity with everyone who is trying their damned hardest to stay afloat in this city. A rent freeze, rent freeze, anything else is unacceptable. Thank you. See you, mate.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Nora Hortero. I think we may have just lost Nora. I think, Andrew, I think Nora's not even on the attendee, so maybe we should go to I think Andrew, I think Nora's not even on the attendee, so maybe we should go to the next speaker as Nora signs back on possibly.
There. She has her hand raised.
All right, we're just waiting to get her promoted. Nora, I think you could speak, but we don't see you. In case you, welcome, welcome.
Gracias. Good evening. My name is Nora Hortero and I am a resident of Sunset Park, member of Neighbors Helping Neighborhood. I have three kids, one in college, one graduating high school, and one, the youngest graduating elementary school. I'm disappointed that there is not person, testimonies in Brooklyn and the registration closed on Monday. Another increase in the rent will be affect me a lot because I will have to work more hours and that means I will spend less time with my kids. The owner of the building has brought up a court more than full time for injustice reason. One of her reason was that apparently did not sign our lease and the other because we didn't pay the rent, which is incorrect. She doesn't cash our check and actually say four or five months to catch a check. In January, our boiler once again broke and we did not have water for a whole day. The rent increase will greatly affect New York. Increase will really affect New York because there are already a lot of people homeless. Shelters and we do not need more people there. Instead, a raise rent, there should be a project to solve this housing crisis. Many families need to leave, we other families, in one apartment. Rent is already high and they are trying to train us to raise rent and pay us out stabilized rent. We are just recovering from the pandemic and inflation. It's affecting us. Do you know the children that are fathers from their parents? It's they. They need to still be a kid and should not see how landlords are only think on a bidding, a violence. Oh, I heard you all vote to increase rent. Remember that we not bring anything from this world. We go to a better place. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Councilmember Brewer. Welcome. You're muted, Councilmember.
Thank you very much for the rent guidelines board and I am Gail Brewer and I'm Councilmember for the Upper West Side. Just a couple of things that you know already, which is that I know that the rent guidelines board has, you know, challenged. They want to keep the building owners whole and they want to keep renters from undue rent burden and that's not easy. But you know that rental arrears accrued by New York families is about $2 billion. Obviously, the ERAP program helped because my understanding is there were 336,000 applications. Just to give you a sense of the challenge, 2.4 billion sent to help tenants and to owners. So that shows the challenge. We in our office, we have a monthly rental for tenants workshop and hundreds of people show up more than ever. We even have attorneys who willing to sit into all hours of the night trying to solve problems. We're all trying to deal with the squeal issue that every single person has three or three. But just so you know, the 50,000 versus higher, maybe 60 or 70 as a cutoff is a challenge. A lot of seniors don't fit into there and they are rent burdened. Obviously, the good cause in Albany is not your issue, but it does, it would help. It's not the law and it didn't pass this year. So we're really up against a wall and trying, how do we help all of these rent burdened tenants? I believe also that when the eviction moratorium expired on January 15th of this year, there were 227,000 eviction filings in court as of April 26. There will be more. And obviously, if we increase rent stabilization in terms of the rent, all of those folks, one way or another, are going to be rent burdened. So I really do, just like everybody else, as much research as we've done, I strongly support not voting for a rent increase for another year, freezing the rent as we have in the path. And certainly to continue for the single room occupancy and the lodging house tenants because they are the most vulnerable residents and there are many of them left. Now, I certainly know, and I will hear from all those who have small buildings, but I don't want to say, I don't think that they should get the increase that would then rent burden others. I also say every year, maybe I'm wrong, that there are so many buildings that have both rent stabilized or controlled and market and that the market does help curb the challenges that might come from not having enough coming from the rent stabilized and rent controlled. So I'm here to urge you, just like everybody else, no rent increases this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our next speaker is Estelita Molina. You're muted. Great, we're ready.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Estelita Molina. Soy integrante de vecinos ayudando a vecinos. Mi problema sigue difícil porque yo vivo por más de 22 años en una casa que no es renta estabilizada, es propiedad privada. Entonces, la renta es alta más el aumento que están proponiendo para nosotros es bastante, principalmente para mí. La pandemia del COVID me dejó sin trabajo. Una de mis hijas se enfermó, el papá de mis hijas murió. Ese dinero lo tuvimos que poner entre todos. No nos hemos podido recuperar. Estoy viviendo en Sunset Park, una comunidad pobre trabajadora que gana menos del salario mínimo la mayoría de las personas y nosotros no podemos aspirar a un apartamento de renta estabilizada o cualquier otro programa. Para nosotros es muy difícil, especialmente para mí, que económicamente, pues si estoy mal y si vivimos en una casa donde las reparaciones pequeñas las hace el dueño, pero las reparaciones grandes, si nosotros no queremos tener cucarachas o cualquier insecto, tenemos que arreglar y eso va a cuenta nuestra. Sí, para mí y para muchos vecinos que vivimos en esta situación es muy difícil. Ahora pedimos que deje, que no aumenten o que nos den una renta congelada para poder recuperarnos de esta situación que estamos pasando porque sí es muy difícil para muchos de mis vecinos que pues vivimos de un salario menos, menor al básico. Se nos hace más difícil conseguir comida, pasajes, ropa, cosas para los niños. Entonces estoy pidiendo a ustedes que pues nos ayuden en esta situación, congelar la renta sería lo mejor para nosotros. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is James Nemeister. James.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Excellent. Okay, so thank you. A good evening to Reese and members of the board. Thank you for listening this evening and providing this additional opportunity for New Yorkers to testify before you. My name is James Nemeister. I'm testifying today on behalf of Councilmember Alexa Vilas, who represents Red Hook in Sunset Park. For every one of our constituents here today who testifies this evening, I can assure you that there are hundreds, thousands more who are experiencing the same things they are going through. And I hope you will take what they have to say seriously, not least of all because of the language barriers and the technical barriers they overcame to speak to you today. Right. So, you know, you've already heard from some of our constituents who are, you know, very worried about the possible two to four percent rent increases that the board has recommended in its preliminary vote. Many are already battling the rising cost of living in New York City. Many have fought for years with aggressive landlords for repairs and are still fighting for basic services. Is that fair to hike their rents when they're not getting the services? No! Rent stabilization is the primary anchor of affordability and source of low income housing here in New York City. According to the most recent housing vacancy survey, one in eight tenant families surveyed missed at least one rent payment. One in 10 were having difficulty getting food to eat during the pandemic. You know, of those who miss rent, about a third are still in arrears as when the survey was done pretty recently. So rent regulated tenants are still struggling. Your job as a board is not to listen to the business interests, only not to those who appointed you, but to strike a balance. And this year, not only do we need at least a rent freeze, but a lot of these folks need a rent rollback. They need a rebate. They need repairs.
Thank you for your testimony.
So David, I believe that's who we can locate that pre-registered at this point. So I'll ask if there is time remaining, would you like to take testimony from folks?
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll ask those who are attendees who would like to speak as an unregistered speaker to raise your hand. And I think we're just gonna take it from the top down. Does that make sense, Andrew?
Yeah, sure. Let me, I'll just read out how you can raise your hand depending on whatever.
Yeah, and let's translate that as well.
I'm getting, I'm getting some texts about some folks that we skipped are on. And so can we figure out who's on and make sure we locate them before we move on to opening?
Yeah. Okay, Shayla, do you, I'm trying to think, does it make sense to do it verbally? Or should we do it by email while Andrew is reading out the instructions? Or what do you think makes the most sense?
I can text Andrew and Andrew, you can do whatever you need to with it. Yeah.
Are they on attending as they signed up? Because we don't see them.
I'm only talking to the folks coordinating folks to show up, so I see a Paulette on here, Khadijah. And they're, they say they're both on. So Paulette, we don't see that person listed as that name.
No, we don't. No.
Neither with Khadijah.
How do you spell Khadijah with a K? I don't see, I don't see.
I don't see Khadijah either.
So folks who are on the, who are listening in, please text me the names that they're assigned on under or the email address so that we can like upgrade them. If not, they're just gonna have to raise their hand and go in the order.
The email address doesn't help actually at this point, so.
But also, I don't, I don't think we have anyone who pre-registered with Paulette or Khadijah. So we don't see them in the attendees and I don't believe we have anyone with that name who pre-registered.
Well, you know, Danielle, I see, I see a Paulette.
Oh, there is a Paulette. Yes, there is a Paulette.
They're not alphabetical, but let me take a quick look. Andrew, do you want to read the, do you want to read the instructions?
Yeah, and then we'll translate it as well, so. So for those who didn't have a chance to register in advance, we have some time remaining for additional testimony. If you would like to testify, please raise your hand to signal your wish to speak. On a desktop computer, click Raise Hand in the Webinar controls or press Alt Y on Windows or Option Y on a Mac. On a smartphone, tap Raise Hand in the Webinar controls. For those joining by telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and press star nine again to lower. And when you are called on, please remember to limit your testimony to two minutes. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Para aquellos que no tuvieron la oportunidad de inscribirse con anticipación, nos queda algo de tiempo para testimonios adicionales. Si desea declarar, levante la mano para señalar su deseo de hablar. Ahora, en una computadora, haga clic en lo que es Raise Hand o levantar la mano en los controles del seminario web. O presione ALT más la tecla de Y en Windows u opción más la tecla Y en una Mac. En un teléfono inteligente, pulse Raise Hand o levantar la mano en los controles del seminario web. Para aquellos que nos acompañen por teléfono, presionen estrella nueve para subir la mano. Presionen estrella nueve nuevamente para bajar la mano. Cuando se le llame, recuerde limitar su testimonio a un máximo de dos minutos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. I'm just gonna also make one other reminder, which is if you have already spoken, we will not call on you or you cannot testify twice in the same hearing. So I just wanted to remind people about that as well. All right, so Danielle or Andrew.
David, could we get a Spanish translation about that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
También le quiero recordar a las personas que si usted ya habló, no lo vamos a llamar otra vez. De nuevo, si usted ya habló, usted no va a poder hablar otra vez en esta audiencia. Gracias.
Okay, so Andrew and or Danielle, are we gonna start promoting the people who've raised their hands?
Yes, I believe.
I see the first person. Crystal Calderon. Yes, now you're unmuted. If you want to turn your camera on, you're welcome to.
Okay, I'm just doing that right now. Okay, great. Okay, awesome. My name is Crystal Calderon. I live in a railroad apartment in Greenpoint, Brooklyn, currently one of the most sought after neighborhoods to live in in New York City. I moved into my current apartment in 2009. My landlord hid the rent stabilized status of my apartment and overcharged me $1,200 to $1,400 more than was legally permitted per month for seven years. In 2016, when I learned of the rent fraud scheme the landlord was pulling in four of their rent stabilized buildings throughout the neighborhood, I began a rent overcharge claim through DHCR. The landlord, her son and their acting agents have begun, well, began harassing me on a daily and nightly basis since 2016. It continues to this day. The harassment has included having racial and homophobic slurs hurled at my neighbor and I, threatening me with rape on a number of occasions, warning my neighbor and I that we are not safe walking around the neighborhood, kicking and banging on our doors, leaving feces on our doors, stealing our mail and trash and being sexually assaulted in the hallway of the Kings County Housing Court by my landlord's son, who's the manager of her properties. The list goes on and on. The rent fraud scheme the landlord has been running in four rent stabilized buildings in Greenpoint and Williamsburg consists of fully renovating the buildings without certificates of occupancy on file to this day and renting an Airbnb, these rent stabilized units at over three times more than what is legally permitted. The ground floor units of these buildings have businesses illegally operating out of what are supposed to be rent stabilized apartments. Other landlords have just been hoarding vacant rent regulated apartments in an effort to weight out strong tenant protections with the belief that lobbyists will prevail in pushing new legislation that will allow for these easy deregulation in New York future. I'm almost done. My story and I are not an exception where the rule, I just happen to be one of the few tenants that have been able to withstand and continue to fight such unscrupulous and criminal behavior. Other more vulnerable tenants are successfully displaced through such crime and harassment. An example, tenants with dependents, senior citizens, immigrants, tenants with disabilities, et cetera. Landlords who have been hoarding.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I see E. Margulies, but I'm not sure of the first name. And you are muted and your camera's not on if you do want to turn it on.
Hey, I'm Eric Margulies. You know, I'm a landlord. I just want to say, you know, inflation is eight percent. I haven't gotten rent collections from many tenants due to COVID and I have very little hope or that I'm gonna be able to get some of that money. I can't make repairs without money. The buildings are all very old. They're deteriorating and if my other expenses, I mean, I have all these, I have a host of expenses and there's just no relief. You know, it used to be that if you had, you know, if you can renovate an apartment, you can raise the rent accordingly, but you can't do that now. So the only thing we can rely on is increases in rent, hoping that it will keep up with inflation. And it's just not going to. Four or six percent does not keep up with inflation, we all know. So these buildings are, I just don't have the money to put in. They're falling apart. They're not falling apart, but you know, I mean, they're going to fall apart. That's what the future is. The buildings are suffering. And these increases are the only relief that we have. I can just say that this whole system is broken. This is crazy. I feel for these tenants that don't, that can't afford a rent increase. And they should not have, you know, they should have a small reasonable rent increase. But this whole thing where we're keeping these tenants in perpetuity at these way, 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 way under market rents, and nothing can be done about it. It just doesn't make any sense. This whole system doesn't make sense. But right now, we're working within the system. We just need to keep up with inflation. We need to be able to put money back into the buildings so they don't fall apart. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next, our next speaker, they are, I'm sorry, the last digits on the, I don't know, see the last digits on their phone. Go ahead. You could, the person who ends 533, your phone number, please speak.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sandra Barrow. I would just like to say a few words about the addiction C-brunt and also the people that are living across all parts of New York. Having difficult times, even though we are going through a pandemic, paying their, paying their rent due to lost income. And also, I think that the landlord should be not getting the raise, increase from the tenants. I think people should be able to stay in their homes without worrying about are they going to be homeless? So I'm asking the board, please vote for a rent rollback. Thank you for the time and courtesy.
Thank you for your testimony. I see that the next person on our list, I think it's S. Folsen. Name? I'm not sure. All right, S. Folsen, we haven't given you permission to speak yet, you know, technically, technologically. So I think we're just waiting to do that. And then you'll be the next person. Yet now you're permitted to speak. So the floor is yours. S. Folsen, you're ready to go.
Hello?
Hello, we're ready to hear your testimony.
Yes, I'm, I'm calling on behalf of Tilly Towers. We're getting an 8% rent increase. And I want to know, how do we get out of Mitchell Lama and we still in force with Mitchell Lama? And they're saying that we're going to be off of Mitchell Lama. And we don't have no protection. Also, our building has been stabilized. And then now we're not going to be stabilized in the rent from the rent increase. And a lot of people that's in senior citizens and people who's working, they can't afford the rent of the rent increase. So I'm asking for it to be freeze or we don't get the rent increase this year.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Zaneda Bonilla. Hi.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Zaneda Bonilla. Soy madre, estudiante universitaria. Soy voluntaria en la comunidad y me he establecido en el barrio de Sunset Park por alrededor de casi 20 años. Hoy estoy aquí para alzar mi voz y para decir el impacto económico que traería a mi familia y a mis vecinos un incremento en la renta, especialmente teniendo en cuenta que la, que la pandemia todavía no ha pasado y que no hay oportunidades económicas para nuestras comunidades latinas y de color. También la canasta básica está incrementando cada día. Somos una familia de cinco. Estoy recientemente, hace ocho días tuve una cirugía. Mi esposo está sin trabajo. Nuestros ahorros están agotando. Al tener un incremento en la renta, voy a tener que dejar la universidad y una vez voy a ver más mi futuro truncado. Me parece injusto que se haga un aumento de renta cuando nuestras comunidades que han sido las que han sacado la seguridad adelante el estado y este país y la economía adelante y que se siga moviendo, seamos desechados nuevamente como trapos sucios. No es justo que se haga un aumento de renta cuando la balanza no está equitativa, cuando no tenemos las mismas oportunidades que muchos tienen. No es justo que se agregue estrés, que traiga más ansiedad y que traigan más, agreguen problemáticas. Porque al movernos de nuestro lugar donde vivimos, no solamente impactan nuestra vida física y emocional, sino que también impacta de manera negativa el autoestima de nuestros hijos y va a causar que estos tengan bajas notas escolares y va a crear en ellos que salgan del espacio donde ellos nacieron, donde se crearon y donde hemos construido nuestras raíces. Entonces, mi petición es que no se apruebe y que es más que la reduzcan porque estamos en crisis y nosotros somos los más afectados. Por favor, escuchen la voz del pueblo. Escúchenlos, por favor, porque no es justo que se nos haga esto. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Teddy Thomas. Teddy, you are muted and let's, there you are. We have you.
Thank you, David, for allowing me to speak. I'm a tenant in a rent stabilized building in Upper Manhattan in West Harlem. I've lived here for five years. And I want to address something that that landlord Eric just said about buildings about to be falling apart and them needing more money to upkeep those buildings and prevent them from falling apart. My building is falling apart already. We've already talked about the fact that increases for landlords, for slum lords, have outpaced, have been outpaced, landlords' profits have outpaced inflation. They've continued to reap the benefits of the good times, the Giuliani era, of the de Blasio era, taking in more money than they need to upkeep these buildings while not putting in basic maintenance. In my apartment building, I've had water leaks from my bathroom ceiling, from my living room ceiling, from my bedroom ceiling, from the day that I moved in in December of 2017. I've had an active HP case where my landlord refuses to do the necessary repairs despite having a court order issued against them. Eric, we're not talking about landlords tonight. The Rent Guidelines Board is not here to give you more money. The gravy train is ending. It's time for tenants to get a rent rollback in New York City. Until we get the maintenance that we deserve, until we get habitable conditions, until inflation is decreased, and until tenants recover from the pandemic and are able to pay back the rent that you so vocally want to decry not getting from them when they've been unable to pay for food and medical care. Until all of that has been resolved, we cannot increase rent. We need a rent rollback of at least 2% to 3%. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Yessenia Carvajal. Yessenia, welcome.
Gracias, buenas noches. Estoy hablando en representación de mis padres. Este, porque yo hace un año y medio salí de Nueva York. Este, por la misma razón, este, perdón. Por la misma razón, este, que estaba todo caro y pues el parqueadero y todo se puso muy caro en la ciudad de Nueva York. Pero ahorita estoy en representación de mis padres. Porque mis padres tuvieron que quedar allá por motivo de trabajo. Yo viví en la ciudad de Sunset Park por 25 años. Y ellos tuvieron que quedar allá, pero ahorita están, se quedaron mis padres y mi hija. Y ahorita cada quien se tienen que ir y buscar un cuarto porque lamentablemente de $2,000 dólares le subieron a $2,400. Eh, entonces ellos no pueden, este, pagar esa cantidad de dinero. Entonces, por esa razón, este, yo estoy aquí para hablar, este, sobre lo que está pasando, que están incrementando demasiado la renta. Y pues, yo creo que, que tienen que hacer algo para parar todo lo que está pasando. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is John F. John, you're muted. There you go. And your camera, there you go. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chan, for allowing me to speak really quickly. I've been listening to the last couple of hours. And I think where we are is that this is extremely complex for both sides. But I'm just gonna give you my, my take really quickly. I'm a very active social worker. I work in a community-based organization. We serve senior citizens. And I think a rent increase at this time will really be detrimental to our senior population. I've heard mentions of SCREE tonight. I want to put out there that let's, the SCREE for seniors who are alone and home down to go through the processing for SCREE is extremely difficult. So that may be the reason why some don't have it. But yeah, the other thing is, those of us who are in the social service industry, I'm lucky. I'm involved, I'm a member of 1199. So I'm a social service organization at the Tula Union. However, there are social service workers out there who have not received a cost of living increase under several administrations, as I have. So I think you've got all of that in mind. And again, understanding where the landlord stand in this, the inflation level and the things of that nature going on. I think that the rent increase at this time is going to be extremely detrimental. I would hope that the city would look to find other ways of making the landlords whole. Especially with the financial, what the prediction of a recession. That's what they're predicting is coming. I just really feel at this time, again, I'm repeating myself, but I just want to get it out there to get them to understand at this moment in time. And I hope you guys take that and consider the seniors and the people that are providing services to them. So thank you for allowing me to speak and everybody has a good and safe evening.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Gordon Lee. I see you. You're muted if you want to turn off the mute.
Yeah, yeah, now, I think that, um, good night, people. My name is Mr. Gordon Lee, as you all know. And of course, you all know, I am also here to demand that you don't increase rent. Because if it's gonna go up and up and up, you know, how are we gonna afford it? We have no way of affording it. You know, I, I can't do magic and pull $1,000 out of my pocket to pay rent if rents go up and up and up and up. And of course, eventually, we won't have any way of affording it ever again. And you also have to roll the rent back because it is too high. And we had to pay rent, we had to make sacrifices we couldn't really make. You know, I am, was always, for a long time, took issue with the, the way things have gotten, including what's called the runaway inflation. It's got three names, runaway inflation, gentrification, and neo-colonialism. Where prices are going up and up and up until we eventually cannot afford it ever again for the rest of our lives. And we're priced out of our hometown. Now, I'm demanding you don't raise rent and roll it back. And I'm demanding that gentrification be banned. Why? I just explained why. And again, what all of these people said, they're right. Because I also, maybe partially for my own reasons, I'm unable to pay an ever-rising rent. Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. I saw Assembly Member Maitains for a second on the screen, but I lost her. All right, so maybe, should we, Andrew, should we move to the next speaker until the Assembly Member gets back on? Okay. There, there's the Assembly Member. Assembly Member, welcome. You're muted and your camera's not on if you want it to be on. Assembly Member, you're still muted.
I'm muted. Unmute me.
You're unmuted now.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Yes, welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much. I am Assembly Member Marcela Metena. I represent the 51st Assembly District. Those are the neighborhoods of Sunset Park, Bay Ridge, and Park Slope. I'm here because I'm tired of hearing, year after year, landlords complain about not being able to afford to maintain their building. They have years of neglect of basic repairs and maintenance and not something over the last couple of years. But the landlords have choices while tenants don't. Landlords have the opportunity to be made whole because the state provided money for the rent that tenants owed during the pandemic. There's programs available, free at low cost for new boilers and windows, that tenants don't, that landlords don't take advantage of. They can also file their taxes at a loss. Or lastly, if they are really hurting, they can sell their property. Year after year, they complain about their loss on their investment, but they seem to forget an investment doesn't guarantee a gain. And sometimes there is a loss. The Rent Guidelines Board, you have a choice, the choice to be on the right side of history. We cannot sacrifice one class for another. The poor working class needs help and we must intervene. We cannot feed into the greedy capitalists. Right now, a one-bedroom apartment is going for $2,500 a month. And in order to apply to rent it, you have to prove that you are making 40 times the salary. That's $150,000. To the Rent Guidelines Board, I am a state Assembly Member and I don't even make that much money. This is not, uh, this is not a political decision. This is a decision that has to be made morally. The right thing to do is to at least pass a 0% increase. Folks are still struggling. They need assistance. And shame on this mayor, who was president of the borough of Brooklyn, to not have a hearing in person in his borough. Shame on him for being the senator who used to represent Sunset Park and the tenants took the time to put him in office. Remember, it was the tenants that voted for you. You need to do right by these tenants. They need a 0% increase. Thank you.
Our next speaker, it says Advocate Mimi. Advocate Mimi, if you could give us your full name, I'd appreciate it. And the floor is yours.
Hi there. My name is Mimi Mitchell. I'm a member of Crown Heights Tenant Union. And I'm also a volunteer advocate at Legal Hand Crown Heights and a bunch of other organizations that I'm an advocate for. I live in Brooklyn and I, along with the people that I assist, mainly people of color in underserved communities, we are afraid of being forced out. We're already under pressure from our landlords due to gent, due to heavy gentrification. Please do not help them complete this plan. A rent increase would do just that. Most of us are already paying over 50% of our income in rent. We're not millionaires, you know, we don't have summer homes and we're not millionaires who are living off the fat cow. We're working people who are already, who are already rent and income burdened. Most of us haven't even recovered from COVID. I myself don't even have a job, don't have my full-time job back from COVID. We're still in a pandemic. Not only are we in a pandemic, but prices are inflating, as we all see, and we're heading for a recession. I guess what, I guess what I'm asking for is consideration. I'm asking for you to consider the fact that landlords are going to use this increase as a way of getting rid of tenants. Landlords are also going, are not going to use this increase to make maintenance repairs. You've given them increases after increases after increases, yet six years on, I still have over 50 violations in my apartment. None of them have been fixed. I paid my rent. You gave them the increases. What did they do with it? They enriched themselves with it. My landlord alone owns over 20, over 20 buildings. He just signed an $18 million deal that was written up. He doesn't need my rent increase. What do you? He doesn't need my rent increase. What he really wants, though, is my apartment so that someone else paying triple what I pay can move in. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, our next speaker is C.L. Management. Um, you're muted and your camera's not on, and I'm going to ask that you could also, if you give us your full name, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you if you want your camera.
No, I'm okay. My, uh, my name is Alan. Um, so can I speak now or?
Alan, could you give us your last name as well?
Uh, Chuan, C-H-U-N.
Thank you. Welcome.
So my name is Alan and, uh, you know, we we own a couple of buildings in in, um, Hell's Kitchen, Manhattan. And, uh, you know, I'm a landlord, um, you know, I was a renter, um, you know, before in my day, and I'm also a homeowner. So I think like, you know, I I hear a lot of tenants complaining and, you know, I understand that, you know, I know that there are some bad landlords out there. I personally know some, but there are some also, we have to also acknowledge the fact that there are some bad tenants too. You know, and, you know, I think that during COVID, neither the landlords nor the tenants really gained, you know, much. I mean, like, we all had financial hardships. We all had stress. You know, you look on a New York Post article, you you hear about this landlord, uh, Lincoln Eckley's, who who spent a lot of money on a boiler, tried to do well. There are some good tenants and there are, you know, there are good landlords too. And if, you know, I feel for those tenants that have those repair issues. Um, you know, you know, we we try to avoid them because we don't want that stress. And if you don't believe us, you can come to our building and take a a visit too. Um, I think that, you know, as a landlord, you know, as much as I would like to, you know, freeze the rent or roll back, I mean, honestly, you know, that's really very, very difficult. I understand the timing. We can get back to this next year or whatever, but costs have gone up a lot, you know, food, gas, you know, those buildings that have oil heating. Those are facts, you know. Um, you know, I think that, you know, if I generate a hundred dollars in rent and I and I take away five dollars, I think that might be fair. But at this point, you know, a hundred dollars might equate to one. So where does it become kind of that breaking point where, you know, these building owners are gonna lose out? So I'm just saying that, you know, you have to, you know, really understand both sides of the coin here. And, you know, as a landlord, I I just, you know, I hear you, but I mean, I I just advocate for somewhat of a rent increase on this guidelines this year.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, the 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 next person I think I see is Zaneta Bonilla. I think we saw that person before, but maybe it's another person testifying in that, um, in that Zoom identity. I'm not sure.
Do you want to make it maybe the repeat announcement of if folks, just if folks want to testify and they're using the same name with the same profile, they have to give us a heads up. People cannot testify under the same name or the same person multiple times.
Uh, so maybe it makes sense, uh, Andrew, to 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 go to Tim Paulson until we determine the situation with his native Bonilla Zoom identity?
Yeah, I'm trying to promote some folks. Um, hold on one second.
So 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 Shayla, they should log out and re-log in in another name. Is that what we're saying?
Or they can, they're together, so they can just text us and I can, they'll just let me know that it's a different person. I think they might have been a mistake because they raised their, they lowered their hand. Um, and then Chana, your hand is not raised, so if you do not raise your hand, they will not call on you to testify.
All right, we're just, just so everyone knows, we're just waiting to to promote somebody so they can speak next. That's why we're we're a little quiet. Okay, I think we have Tim Paulson, who's been promoted. Tim, you're muted and your camera is off. If you want to turn that on.
Okay.
Welcome.
Yes, I, thank you. I I I am trying to turn my camera on.
I I I have him. He didn't accept the promotion, but he is able to speak. Um, the only way I can bring him into the meeting to see the cameras if he accepts the promotion, but we can hear you, um, Tim, if you just want to go ahead.
Okay, I'm I I'm just gonna go ahead. Uh, I'm Timothy Paulson. I'm in the East Village. I I am a long-term resident. I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight. And I am really here to represent for goals, good old Lower East Side, but also for my own interests and also for the interests of New York, uh, residents and tenants as a whole. And what I am here to say is one of the, one of the things that doesn't get said is the larger picture. If we allow the the whole situation to be flipped and to say, well, now the it's it's okay for real estate, for landlords to claw back by, you know, through higher or even any kind of increase in rent, uh, to claw back from the freeze and, you know, then that completely eliminates any benefit to anybody living it as a tenant in New York. It it it's an absolutely absurd scenario. It makes no sense at all. If 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 you're gonna give somebody something and then take it back, they a hundred percent don't have the thing that you gave them. In other words, if I give you a hundred dollars and then two months later, because you have no money, and 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 two months later and you still have no money, I take the hundred dollars back, which is our scenario because COVID hasn't gone away. And the effects of COVID are still trailing us, of course, not even trailing us. We're still in it. The idea that that like we need to suddenly give back to landlords is insane.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Maria Barbara Lopez. Uh, you're muted and your camera's not on if you want to turn on your camera. Maria, you're still muted.
Hello.
Buenas tardes. Welcome.
Buenas tardes. Soy Maria Barbara Lopez y tengo cuarenta y tres años de vivir en esta hermosa ciudad, en especial en Sunset Park. Vivo en el mismo edificio hace cuarenta y tres años. Mi departamento es viejo y todavía suscribas instalaciones de el baño, la cocina, todas todavía son obsoletas. El la tina de baño es viejísima y cada vez me aumenta la renta. Anteriormente estaba mi familia, ahora ya estoy sola y yo estoy sin trabajo desde antes de la pandemia por cuidar a mi papá. En todo este tiempo no he dejado de pagar mi renta, pese a que no tengo un trabajo estable. Vivo al día a día y prefiero quedarme sin comer o pagar algún gusto con tal de no perder mi techo. Este aumento perjudicaría mucho mi estabilidad emocional. Yo no quiero ir a parar a la calle porque son cuarenta y tres años viviendo en el mismo lugar. El Subway constantemente me recuerda que soy emigrante, pero amo este país y he trabajado muy duramente para sacar a mis hijos adelante. Para mí es muy importante no perder mi techo como cualquier neoyorkino porque todos los de mi barrio de Sunset Park somos gente trabajadora, honesta de primera línea. Es importante que el alcalde recuerde que Brooklyn es su casa y nosotros lo apoyamos para que él esté ahí. Y sobre todo, este país si nosotros no sería nada. Tengan en cuenta que este país lo formamos los trabajadores emigrantes. Por favor, entiendan que no pedimos nada, solamente lo justo. Un techo, una casa y un vivir tranquila y un trabajo estable, cosa que en este momento no hay. Subir la renta perjudicaría a toda la gente trabajadora. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sorry, can I take a second just to remind folks if they do not raise their hand and keep their hands raised, they will not get called on to testify? I've gotten a few names of folks who say they want to testify but have not raised their hands. Please raise their, your hand if you would like to testify.
Okay, um, uh, Kadija, Kadija Haynes, welcome.
Hi, hello. My name is Kadija Haynes and I'm here today because I passed out in my basement apartment from a former place I was renting from carbon monoxide poisoning because of terrible, awful landlord neglect. And I'm here today to say that please stop aligning with the landlord class. Um, people are are on here complaining landlords are on here complaining about they don't have any money and they don't have and blaming tenants and, you know, about good landlords and all of this nonsense. And this is not true. People are being forced to take these deplorable living conditions and to live in illegally converted basement apartments because of the exorbitant rents in this country. And just like they, maybe if they would stop trying to live off of their tenants, maybe they can pay for things and they won't have to rely on their tenants to pay for their life. And as a result of that, people are dying, people, apartments are being flooded, like what happened to the Guyanese family in Queens. I was a victim of landlord abuse to the point where I almost died. And this city is pushing people. This is genocidal, what is happening to people. There are tons of homeless people on the street. Eric Adams, what he's doing to people is hyper-exploitative and he needs to go. And the landlord class, they need to go to. And this is why I'm here. I'm here to say this. And all of this nonsense about you can't afford this, well, just like you tell your tenants to get a second job, you need to get a second or third job, maybe, so you can afford your expenses and stop treating tenants like your cash pool because we have families and we have lives and we need to eat too, and we need to have a quality of life. There's no quality of life in this capitalist system and we need to move away from this and we need to hold the landlord class accountable.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, I have Camille Sosa next. Uh, Camille, you're you're muted.
Hello, my name is Camille Sosa. I am a daughter. I'm a daughter and a member in the organization Neighbors Helping Neighbors, an organization that is focused on the problems tenants face with landlords and informing tenants of their forgotten rights. I'm here to talk to you about the consequences and the effects of putting the rent increases in these times we're live, we're currently living in. The reason why this is important is because the times we're living in are not the same times we were living in five years ago, where I could go outside with no mask, not having to worry if today was the day I get infected with COVID, where with two dollars fifty, I could go buy a cone of eggs, whereas in now I need like six. These days, it's more difficult to find well-paying jobs. Food prices and prices of the basic needs are at their highest and are not going down anytime soon. An example of this is the realization that day by day it's getting harder and harder, living in a society that really rarely gives out any help or support that even includes the immigrant or colored people community or even the low-class community in general. The stress people are living in right now is only gonna affect them even more with the rent increases. There are people who don't even have the luxury to have a high-paying job. They don't deserve a rent increase. They don't deserve more stress when they all, all they want is to have basic needs. This is the stress of knowing you barely have enough money to provide for your family, not enough. For me, looking at my parents not being able to spend time with me due to work hurts. And it's either paying rent and food or being infected with hunger. Even though I'm fifteen, it hurts me seeing my parents suffer to provide for me. Now imagine how younger children would feel seeing their parents struggle and spend less of their childhood time with them due to the rent increase. Thank you for listening. I hope you take in consideration my words while you're voting.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Joyce Webster. Joyce, you are muted and you're not on camera if you want to be on camera. All right, Joyce, I can see you, but you're still muted. Yep, now I think you're good now.
Congratulations, Joyce. I know it was a struggle to get on here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. How everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
Yes, I've been a long-term a tenant for many years that had provided for where I'm living at, at twelve thirty-seven Dean Street. I had to take over and I was a sick person with asthma, the landlord being in the building and it cost me so much money to care for the building where he stuffed away from the building. And not only that, he ended up putting me in harm's way. I got bitten by rats. And up to today, we didn't have no heat ever since February, when he came back. He didn't come back in thinking. He harassed me out of my place for years and I got bitten by rats and we didn't have no heat ever since it got warm outside. Um, I figured that it's more warmer out there. Man, it wasn't no heat ever since February. And another thing, we didn't have no hot water for ten days now and almost like to burn my feet by boiling water. And I've been maintaining this building for fourteen years out of my pocket. I had to end up paying for all the services that he took out of my name. And up to today, I don't have a meter because of this man. But he stuffed away from this building, not only harassing me for years, over thirteen years that he tried to force me out of my place. And I think I did a hell of a good job. And for them to increase, to put a raise on rent, I think it's ridiculous, especially when they know that it's a pandemic going on. And for these landlords, I don't know about them all, but my landlord, Mr. Everton P. Air, he been like abused me over thirteen years. And I don't think it's fair that people should have a raise, increase on their rent.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maricela Sosa. Welcome.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Maricela Sosa. Soy residente de Sunset Park. He vivido por más de treinta y cinco años en este vecindario. Y estoy muy triste saber escuchar que nos quieren aumentar las rentas. Estoy aquí para hablarles sobre el impacto que tiene en nuestro vecindario el aumento de rentas. La razón por la cual esto es importante porque muchas familias que viven en aglomeramientos porque es la forma de ayudarse mutuamente porque las rentas en, son super caras y la gente en la comunidad gana muy poco. Un ejemplo, por ejemplo, en el dos mil veinte, veinte veinte, mucha gente con la pandemia se contagió por vivir muchos en un apartamento. Y cada vez que hay algún incendio o cada vez que pasa algo, algún accidente, mo, hay muchos incendios y mucha gente muere por la razón que vive mucha gente que viven en aglomeramientos, en los apartamentos. Lo más importante de esto es hacerle saber a la comunidad y recordarles que como inquilinos tenemos derechos. Que recuerden que estamos en una pandemia. Entonces, por favor, paren las rentas. No nos suban las rentas. Es muy importante que nuestra gente esté como está ahora cómodas porque subir las rentas significa estrés para nuestra comunidad. Gracias por escuchar a nuestra comunidad.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, our next speaker is Jinghe Feng, uh, who I believe had sound issues the last time they spoke. So, uh, to make sure that we are able to hear the testimony, we're gonna hear.
Can I confirm that they don't need to promote both the names? Are you using? Can I confirm that they don't need to promote both the names? Are you using two devices? Or will you be testifying from the phone that you're using video on? I can't hear anything. You're on mute.
They're on mute.
Yeah, we're gonna be using the phone if that works.
Oh, we hear you perfectly. Just hopefully the sound will stay the same. Thank you.
All right, round two. We're going for it.
Uh, my name is Jinghai Feng. I've lived in this um in my current apartment for twenty-eight years. Uh, there's been two different landlords in my time in this apartment.
那房东已经涨了一倍多了。
And my rent has doubled since I moved in. Uh, I live with my wife and we are a retired couple. If the rent continues to increase, we cannot bear this pressure. We want, we want to use the power we have to limit the rent increases to less than two percent within the next two years.
我们确实是负担不起现在这样。
We cannot bear an increase more than this. I really hope that the government will use its power to help us maintain our way of life.
谢谢，谢谢大家。
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your testimony.
So David, I have uh two, two folks who raised their hands, but they keep declining to be promoted as panelists.
Okay, uh, Chana just came on.
Oh, she did? Great. Okay.
Uh, but that's just for talk, I can't tell. Chana, if you could, if you could unmute and if, if you can put on your camera, that's fine. Um, Andrew, I noticed that the other speaker doesn't have a name at all. Um, okay.
It just says guest.
Okay. Chana, we're ready. If if you could unmute?
Chana, si no nos escucha, por favor, active su micrófono.
Chana? Yes, right, we can hear you now. And if you, yeah, I think you can only talk. I don't think we could uh
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
That's fine. Hi, my name is Chana Kamens. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant and a city employee. I cannot afford a four and a half percent increase. And if I lost my apartment, I absolutely would not be able to afford a new apartment in New York City, let alone my neighborhood of the last sixteen years. The myth of a small, struggling landlord betrays the reality that ninety-one percent of small landlords do not own rent-regulated apartments. And the maintenance of landlord income should not be prioritized over the needs of over two million working people who are struggling and most of whom have not received a cost of living increase to keep pace with increased cost of living in this city in the last decade, let alone in the last couple of years. And many of whom bore the brunt of the economic distress brought on by, by the pandemic. Landlords has had access to emergency rental assistance money paid directly to them and can still apply for hardship assistance from the city. There are also many incentives to lower the cost of major capital improvements, um particularly as landlords um go to comply with Local Law Ninety-seven, which will increase uh, which will increase requirements around energy efficiency. The Rent Guidelines Board must pass zero percent increase. It is the only moral choice. Anything else will exacerbate the eviction crisis we're facing and push people out of your homes, out of their homes. Uh, you don't wanna be responsible for this and uh we don't wanna see that happen in our city. And uh I ask you to take into consideration all of the testimony you're hearing today and uh think carefully about what you do next as representatives um who are meant to balance the needs of tenants and landlords and not just prioritize the uh investment income of landlords. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. There is one more person with their hand raised, but they're declining to be promoted so that they could speak. Um, oh, I I think they are ready to speak, so um, uh, we don't have your name. If you can give us your first and last name, that'd be great.
I'm not comfortable giving my name and I hope that doesn't preclude my comments.
Uh, go ahead.
All right, uh, thank you. Pursuing any rent increase at all right now is delusional and it misunderstands the weight of this moment. It willfully mischaracterizes what has happened to all of us, including the landlords and including the members of the Rent Guidelines Board. You have lost people too and the people you have, the people you love have lost people they love. And it is disrespectful to the dead to act as though the pandemic has somehow been insufficiently catastrophic and does not warrant a rent freeze to keep people, to keep the people who are lucky enough to survive safe in their homes, to keep them from becoming homeless, to give them a place to socially distance, to safely isolate if they catch the disease, to heal and to learn to cope with the devastating long-term effects. If people cannot um stay safe, this will continue and they will infect you and the people you care about. I recognize the tensions here, but this one in twenty twenty, uh twenty twenty-two is not worth it. We'll talk again next year. But this vote is not like the twenty nineteen vote and it's not like the twenty twenty-five vote will be. Landlords who do not have the moral constitution to consider the moral dimensions of uh housing during a crisis cannot be good landlords. We don't want them and neither do the policymakers who want to keep New Yorkers alive. If you're in, if an investment, if an investment is not working out, you get out and you find another investment that you like more. Sell your building to the tenants and go buy cryptocurrency or something. When the eviction moratorium was lis- was lifted in January, almost instantly, there were so many eviction cases filed simultaneously that the housing court couldn't find enough lawyers. And it handled that scenario by universally violating tenants' legal rights to have representation as required by law. By any reasonable measure, this was an incomprehensible miscarriage of justice. And anybody who disagrees with that statement didn't really wanna live in the society we had before the pandemic and doesn't wanna get back there. So to the, to the people on the board, this vote is the single most consequential thing that you can do to help. And I hope you will.
Thank you for your testimony. I have Veronica Mira Fuente, welcome.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Verónica Mira Fuentes y Rodrigo Castillo. Somos miembros de Vecinos Ayudando Vecinos. Vivimos en Sunset Park. Estoy aquí hoy para hablarles porque me preocupa que vaya a aumentar la renta porque en estos momentos la situación económica está bien difícil. Especialmente en familias que vivimos, que vivimos día a día para salir, seguir adelante. Y más ahorita mismo se nos hace más difícil con todas las cosas caras que subieron de precio como la canasta básica. En estos más de dos años de pandemia, nos hemos enfermado dos veces y hemos tenido que hacer cuarentena encerrados, sin tener ningún ingreso. Si en estos momentos ya se nos hace difícil juntar la renta de cada mes, más difícil va a estar para nosotros pagar la renta si se no, si se nos incrementa. Tenemos treinta años viviendo en este vecindario. Aquí vivimos nosotros y también nacieron nuestros hijos y ahora nietos. Estuvimos luchando cinco años en la corte de vivienda para que no nos desalojaran y nos aumentaran la renta. Con muchos dueños que compraban el edificio porque lo que, porque lo querían vender y aumentar la renta, sin importar las circunstancias en que se encuentra la economía en estos momentos. Hemos sido acosados y amenazados por los dueños que han querido desalojarnos por querer dejar el edificio vacío y así poder subir la renta a precios muy altos. Por último, no es justo que no podamos testificar en persona aquí en Brooklyn. Muchas gracias y les agradecemos su atención.
I'm glad that we were able to both uh hear all the registered speakers who uh showed up as well as all of those who had not registered, so that's uh, that's great for our hearing. Um, I would just like to thank um our interpreters, Caesar, Alvin and Liz. Uh, it's, it's a tough job and we were grateful. Um, and we know we'll be doing more next week at our live hearings. Um, I'd like to thank Andrew and Charmaine and Danielle and Brian for running the, the virtual hearings, which has, have their own sets of difficulties as well. And then to thank the, the board members for um listening with me uh and and taking into account the comments that we've received from those who've testified. Um, at this point, um unless I hear of any further business from the board members, I will ask, ask if there is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn from Rob. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alex. Uh, good night all. Our, our meeting is adjourned and uh we as the board and the staff and the interpreters will be back uh next week for our live hearings. Have a good night all.